Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us, members of the public who are with us and whoever's watching on television. Thank you for joining us. It is the 28th of March and this is the Brookline School Committee. Our calendar is on the board and you can see that we have committee meetings, site council, BHS Building Committee meeting, and then lots of spring events. So fewer school committee meetings posted than usually seen on our calendar, but lots of exciting events, including tomorrow night's Trivia Bee at Coolidge Corner School, a new venue for that, and to raise money for the Brookline Education Foundation. Any addition to our calendar? Yes, Ms. Dickoff?
The Coolidge Corner School renaming evenings are April 3rd and April 11th, and those are open to the full community and everyone is welcome to come. The students will be doing presentations and a gallery walk of all of the semifinals names that have been submitted for the Coolidge Corner School naming process. So it should be a pretty incredible set of events.
Do you know the time?
Six o'clock start time. The third is at Coolidge Corner School in the multipurpose room, and the 11th is at Huntman Hall in the library.
And they're the same presentations at both?
Correct. Thank you. We have a consent agenda and I would entertain a motion.
So can I?
Yes.
So a number of these are things that were on the agenda for this evening's School Committee Finance Subcommittee meeting. They haven't been discussed. I think there are a couple of them that, I mean, the first two obviously are not. The three, four, five, and six, it may be worth Ms. Dunn just providing a sentence or two about them. So it might be more than five minutes, and I know you probably have people here.
Why don't we, so let's move three, four, five, and six to the finance report at the tail end of our meeting?
That's fine.
And we'll do that under committee reports?
Okay.
And we will limit the consent agenda to the past record of March 19th and February 28th. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Scott. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Fetterstiel. All in favor?
I wasn't there. I abstained.
Okay, and we have, all right.
I abstained on the 28th. I was there on the 19th.
All right, so Ms. Coyne.
No, I think I abstained.
Okay, we have two abstentions on both. All right, it is time for public comment. Thank you. We have one person so far signed up, Allison Crocker. Yeah, just come on up, tell us, tell us who you are.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hi, my name is Allison Crocker. I'm a science teacher at Brookline High School. I also participated in the three negotiations meetings as a silent representative. After the last round of negotiations for contract took three years, I felt it was important that members of the union be present to increase transparency and improve the efficiency of the process. Last spring I participated in a collaborative group made up of about 50 educators. Both special education teachers and subject teachers came together to bargain with Superintendent Andrew Bott to add a co-planning period to the contract. When two teachers teach together, a co-planning period is essential to providing effective, inclusive lessons. We worked efficiently together to develop and respond to proposals, enabling a small number of us to communicate with Andrew in an informed and productive way. We were able to come to an agreement with Andrew, and we added language to the contract that mandates that co-teachers have a co-planning period. This is an example of how cooperation can lead to positive results for both parties in a timely manner that directly improves the learning environment of our students. I have not witnessed the same collaboration between our parties during these negotiations. A school district is a large entity with many interlocking parts. It is difficult for all of those parts to be represented by the negotiations group, and a silent group is important to represent alternative departments and voices. We are not unreasonable. We are professionals with a common purpose to improve the education of our children. Thus, I urge you to work with the union and negotiate with their silent representatives present in the room. We can again work together to efficiently create a solid contract that both sides can trust and agree with and that will improve the learning environment of the students. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? All right, moving on then. Our first, our next agenda item is budget update.
So Ms. Dunn is going to walk the committee through a number of budget updates, many of which were discussed at Finance, I think just a few moments ago, including vote of the budget number, the revenue and the budget allocation that was presented at last school committee meeting, and continued, continued progress towards all of the budgetary items that are required prior to the end of the fiscal year planning forward. You'll notice in both the presentation and the memo that you have, it's a continuation, it's actually building out of the memo that you received and the presentation you saw several weeks ago relative to the budget work. We've decided to use this format so that what has been voted and decided upon and what has yet to be completed is captured in one document and really is a running record of, of the budget work. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Dunn, and of course, we're both available to answer questions throughout the update.
So the items that we're going to address through the course of this evening is, some are introductions, some are votes. Is the first one, is the approval of the FY 2020 budget request for the annual town meeting, and I'm just going to proceed through there. So the motion that's been provided to you is for bottom line budget allocation and then, or budget authority with an allocation split into two rather than the traditional five. What this does is, as we're building out the requirement for buildings to expend, or the programs to expend by building, we need to relieve the budget managers of the transfer requirement that's been imposed. So as we discussed in the Finance Subcommittee, we deal with transfer paperwork for $9 to $1,000 for somebody to actually be able to buy a box of Crayola crayons because they don't have money in the right account. That is extremely, takes a lot of time, energy, and somewhat unnecessary. So we are proposing that your budget vote in terms of transfers that come to the school committee and, of which we will report all budget anyway, but is that personnel is separated from expenses and that the budget managers have basically their own bottom line budget for expenses and allow them to expend their money according to the correct account. We will still show and always show and report the budget on the traditional categories. Those will not ever disappear. However, how munis in our financial application will be set up will be based on personnel expenses. So the action I would like the school committee take is that they vote the following motion on this first budget update.
I'm happy to move it.
Thank you. Just had any questions?
I would just like to ask the Finance Committee, if you've had this discussion today, what were your findings? So what's your recommendation?
I mean, we talked about this and we were in favorable action. I mean, the one thing that I think what it does that we have been prioritizing for a while is, you know, eliminating paperwork burden on staff. That was an important thing. And not, you know, once, once a budget gets set, not exactly micromanaging all of the pieces underneath it, as Ms. Dunn was saying, for a $9 item, trying to relieve that burden of administering a budget and giving budget managers a little bit more flexibility within, you know, the envelope that they have. I think the one question that didn't quite, this from a couple of meetings ago, that we were still thinking about was, are those five on the, on the next page the right categories or are they, to be reporting out on, this felt like the right, when we talked about it, this felt like the right vote to take for all those reasons. But then when we talk about reporting out on a quarterly basis, part of the reason that you report out on the multiple categories is that you kind of see where the money is going and how we're doing. But the, those five categories on the next page are a little opaque anyway. So at any rate, we're going to stay with them for now, but I think there's also been discussion of like, what are the best ways to report out on the budget on an ongoing basis to make sure we're, if we're over or under where we are. But, but for, for this vote, this, there was support for this vote.
And who, budget managers, which group of people or?
There are lots of them.
Lots of them. I'm sure there are. So department heads?
It's department heads, it's curriculum coordinators, it's principals, it's administrators, it's directors of programs, grant managers of a program grant, who supervise a grant. There are probably 70 people, you know, your budget document, every page in your budget document, every header in your budget document is a, is a budget manager that is approved. And I think the, the big piece is really about getting expenditures down to the building level. So ELL, for example, or the ELE, this, sort of having Mindy Palo be able to have this bottom line authority on her expenses allows her to spend more thoughtful time making sure that her expenditures are reported out by building, and we can start building out those building-based budgets with actual expenditures and reporting and not have her have to wait a week or wait a period of time to be able to do a transfer, to be able to place an order. She can get things into students' hands faster. And it's, it's not only her time, it's my time, it's Jeremy's time, it's the town comptroller's time. It's, it's time that frankly is, should be materials into students' hands.
And an elementary school teacher who's placing an order would depend on what the order is, whether it would go through a department or through the principal, or how does that?
That works in a variety of different ways. It depends on where, where those fundings are. We are working with the principals and the curriculum coordinators about streamlining some of that. So for example, general supplies, there should be sort of general supply money under the principal. We seem to have general supplies for certain programs and materials under certain programs, materials that would just be much more efficiently expended under, under a principal for, you know, crayons paper, the typical things. So those discussions are continuing to happen and will evolve, and money will transfer between and among them as they agree to. So as we build out these building-based budgets, there'll be lots of different change, lots of different conversations that happen.
Okay, so the group show is, you want to vote on this? So on the question, I'll take, that is, we have.
Not quite. So number two in your memo was already voted. Number three, we're just going to go through and just get to the next one, which is kind of out of, is the revenue? Sorry, my slider out of sync here. Is the revenue amount, is the use of the revenue and our changes of how we are, we, we have our revenue this year. School committee will, if school committee would vote, the following revenue allocation of $119,841,548, and please note that we are now in a balanced budget. So the number on this chart from our last presentation that changed was the town school partnership money. The superintendent reported out on this change at the last meeting, having to do with changes in the GIC funding, and then we balance the budget with budget reductions within, within our program. So there, we now have three funding sources. You'll notice that the school-based busing, that is a warrant article and will be funded as part of the warrant, is a Chapter 44 or 53 E and a half revolving fund that is annually voted by town meeting. We will continue our tuition and fees, which is our material fees and our SEVIS program students and circuit breaker, and using that as an offset to our special education tuitions. So if the committee would vote that motion.
Revenue allocation, is it an allocation?
That's, yeah, for now, but note taken.
Yeah.
No.
But that's okay. The following revenue sources.
You got to give it to us, huh?
Sure.
So even though the warrant won't be voted until the town meeting, assuming that it's coming out of, it's coming out of revenue and going into, same money.
Yep.
Right. Any questions or comments on this?
No, I would only note that a number of us have spent a fair amount of time advocating internally to ensure that the budget deficit that we faced could be closed with revenue as in addition to expense cuts. And I'm delighted that this meant that there are, due to that continuing advocacy, that there are no layoffs involved in the budget shortfalls. And so anyway, there was a fair amount of advocacy that went into making sure the revenue allocation allowed that.
On the move, on the move. Thank you. Good stuff.
And so this is a question. We just, in the Finance Subcommittee, had a short presentation by members of the Department of Public Health, Pat Maloney and Mary Minot, with regards to our partnership with them and the Youth Services Substance Abuse Counselor. And this is in front of the committee. I don't have a motion here. I didn't, wasn't able to change this slide. Is, the recommendation would be to authorize the transfer of the budgeted amount for this position for both FY 19 and FY 20. The FY 19 would be effective immediately, and FY 20 would occur on July 1. The position has been a longstanding partnership. The reason why it's coming to school committee at this point for a vote like this is because as we all experienced different things with the balancing of the FY 18 budget, this particular transfer was, I do not have authority to sign that transfer form between departments. And so as we were looking at other transfers that were being made between departments and funds, this one popped out, that the school committee really should be voting this transfer as part of their annual budget process and so that, that the transfer to Public Health could be made. So that is what the request is, is to provide me with authority to make that transfer. The other change we're going to be making in our FY 20 document is, that's missing, is some narrative around this position and our partnership with the Board of Health around this position and what we have funded for this position. And so that, that way, there's both reference in the town financial plan under Public Health and there's reference in the school committee document with regard to this position. And it's very clear that there is a partnership and very clear that there's been a transfer voted. So this is about us being more transparent in what we are doing and supporting youth services on the Public Health side. So my, so if somebody would be willing to make a motion for approving this transfer for FY 19 and FY 20, I would, that would be great. Oh, so FY, so the FY 20 is 6148, and I don't have FY 19. So there's a specific, the only reference in our budget is a very specific, is a specific line item in a spreadsheet buried in the back of our budget document. I don't know the, I don't necessarily, I just need the transaction being voted. It's the actual salary of the employee is what's voted.
Is that a full-time position?
Yes.
So this is not a change in practice?
No, there's no change.
This is essentially a change in accounting.
There's no change in practice. It's just giving the authority for the transfer to happen.
It doesn't sound like it's a change in practice either.
It's no change in practice. I just need the authority.
She realized she didn't have the authority for whatever was being done.
I have no authority to make this transfer. So you could just give me the authority to make the transfer as programmed in the operating budget and don't actually need an amount.
Just to Ms. Dickoff's question and to Mr. Pollack's point about it not being a change in practice, there's no question about, of, of the school department's support for this work. It's critically important work. This is simply a request so that we are doing our accounting properly as we support this position in the Public Health Department.
The only thing that I'll reflect from, wait, did we move it yet? We didn't move it yet. Did we move it?
Move it. Thank you. Is there a second?
Quote.
Ms. Monopoly, thank you. Hang on a sec.
I was just going to describe. So the one thing that we did talk about is that there are a number of these different partnerships that have just some complexity to them. Steps to Success is one, the Brookline Mental Health Center is another, this is a third. We have a variety of these different ones where there's just overlapping revenue streams, supervision, there's just stuff. And so I think what would be help, what we, or what I think would be helpful is if we kind of looked at those sort of together, just so that we can look across them and make sure that the money is transferring properly and that it's, the position's in the right place and the supervision issues are reporting in the right way and they're compliant with contracts and everything. So I think that's just more of a broader question, but from this, it's, it's not a change in practice.
Well, I was asking some, some questions similar to that. Who does the hiring? Who would decide if the position were to be cut? Who does the supervision? I just don't know those answers. Is that the school department still or is that the?
For this, for this position specifically, it's the Department of Public Health. There's a hiring and supervision, and it's a partnership in terms of the work that gets done.
My understanding that school committee members are on the hiring, or school department people are on the hiring committee for this position, and there's sort of, some sort of dotted relationship, which I'm sure I can find, to the high school. Hold on, didn't we just talk about this?
Yeah, it's in the second page of the.
Let's see if I can find it. It's, it's in the document. There is, here.
Second page.
Thank you.
Right, hand side.
Second page, right hand side. You can just read it then. Okay. Memorize this thing, which is terrifying. Right, so PSB administrators serve on the hiring committee, substance abuse prevention counselor is a member of one of the dean's teams overseen by Dean Gilbert Smith, referrals come from PSB, coordinator reports both to the headmaster and the health department director. Anyway, there's a whole list of stuff, but I think the point is that it's not necessarily formalized. I think what this document is doing, which is terrific, is documenting the practice, what's actually happening, which is very helpful, but then I think just formalizing the structure and making it clear so that there aren't questions or confusions.
Do you, Ms. Dunn, for this sort of class of expenditures where, like with steps to success or whatever, where there's this, there are partnerships, where it's being transferred out of, school monies are being transferred to other places to fulfill the school's mission, do you anticipate that there will be a section in the budget document that will sort of, overview of all of them? Because we've been talking generally about the evolutions that you've been proposing and implementing in the budget document for transparency and clarity for town meeting and that particularly sort of towards the front, that with revol, whether it's revolving funds or that there'll be a section on kind of each of these things that isn't just straight line items?
Can I just, just before, before Ms. Dunn answers the question, I just, because the question has come up twice, I just wanted clarity for the school committee. There's no transfer of funds relative to steps to success. So the, the PSB steps advisors and program coordinator are fully PSB employees. And so there is a difference in this partnership versus steps to success. So I just wanted to clarify that, because that was a change about two years ago. So thank you, Ms. Dunn.
So in the budget document, it's a section that will be, is yet to be developed, which is about municipal partnerships. So to provide the, so we have a extensive partnership with the key department, Kevin Stokes and his staff and team. There is some crossover between, we have our technology budget, some of that Kevin Stokes manages for us, but he, we also have funding or out of that, his budget from the town, town budget. We also have building department, for example, is the, kind of the biggest example, where we don't actually show in reference sort of what are the supports that the building department provides to us and what are those allocations. And the history is, I've sort of picked up around the, from the committee members, is there used to be a transfer of sorts and now there isn't. But that doesn't mean we should lose sight of what is being allocated and the school committee be able to have that information. So that will eventually get built out as I work with those departments. Aaron Gallantine and Parks around our playgrounds and, our playgrounds and recreation space is important for the school committee to have her, a portion of her budget that relates to schools so that we know and can support that. DPW, there are other places where they fund, you know, they provide some. DPW, there are other places where they fund, you know, they provide some shoveling and plowing and a variety of other things that support our schools and sort of building some of those out. So that's future additional information that will be part of our budget document for people to know and understand how we know and understand that there's more than just the school department supporting students in our schools.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, onward.
And then, should I just do a quick verbal update where we are with FY19 and kind of what's in motion? All right. So, still in a budget deficit right now for FY19. I've essentially just about identified approximately a million dollars that I will need, I will be transferring in the next, over the next few days out of expense lines into salary accounts to shore up all of our salary obligations and making sure that those are committed and in process. What that will do is for our departments, they, some departments will see anywhere from a 10 to 15 percent reduction in their line items or in their operating budget. Some of them will be left with no money for the rest of the year and others will have some money left for the end of, end of the year. That million dollars is covering unfunded stipends and other compensation that had not been part of the detailed budget documents over the last few years, as well as our food service deficit and subsidy, as well as athletics deficit and subsidy. And probably a little bit, maybe about $100,000 or $200,000 for unknowns, because I know I'm gonna have some unknowns. And then, we will probably likely, we've actually, I've actually added an amnesty day of April 6th, it's intentionally a Saturday. Amnesty Day is fess up with ordering supplies without a PO, we need to really end that practice, that no employee or administrator should be obligating the district in either expecting to get reimbursed or having a vendor provide services without a PO in hand. One of the things I will need to be doing and working with department heads and administrators is, it's been a personal mission of mine, is I do not believe we should be running our organization off the checkbooks of our employees, so how do we support our employees with getting and obtaining supplies and services they need quickly and timely so that they are not expecting a reimbursement? So those, we need to end that practice and figure out how to, how to not have our employees paying for things that the district with our $120 million budget should be, has the resources to pay for. If our systems are broken, our services and supports are not right, we need to address that. So that's Amnesty Day, because I believe there are, I've already had, I've had, I get, obviously, I've had enough to be able to warrant that I'm actually calling for an amnesty day to have people fess up. It's part of, because once I, once I settle and balance this budget, my biggest fear and concern is I will not have those funds to reimburse somebody or a vendor who took an order without a purchase order and prior approval. I will not have funds to pay that. And under state statute, I don't have, the town does not have to pay that bill, because they do not have authority to, the person who gave that order did not have authority. That authority lies with the school committee, that's school committee's authorized signature policy you voted a year ago, clearly states who is the authority to financially obligate the district. So I don't, so I'm hoping that everybody will hear the call and drop in, participate in Amnesty Day and help me figure out how we are not reimbursing employees and we're not ordering supplies without purchase orders ahead of time. So that is, hopefully, we will land June 30th in balance and beyond FY20 and greener pastures without a deficit. So that's the update for 19.
So, I heard the million dollars that needs to be transferred into the personnel account. What is left over in the supplies budget? And I assume part of that will cover the amnesty day?
I'm hoping part of that will be covered, hoping departments have left, so all the departments, when we called the freeze, I told them to plan for 10, 10 or 15 percent reduction in their accounts and to plan that way. I don't know who did and who didn't. I will know that by the end of this weekend. As I go through everything, I've been trying to make sure that I had all of the personnel salary stipends, so I knew what my N, my number was for, what personnel costs were gonna be, so that has just been finished up. Now, I'm gonna do, and I've also been identifying sources and places of funds where money was left as a balance in particular accounts at the end of last year and where their spending is, so some of that's tracking the same as last year. Some of those funds actually historically were transferred to paid salaries and personnel, so some of it is permanently moving that into those salary and personnel accounts rather than having them sit in contracted services, for example. And so, I'm hoping that the departments manage their budgets to 10...
Put in a round number.
I, I, I don't, and so part of it is we've also, I've also been having departments put in orders, actual orders of supplies they're needing, and we're actually slowly releasing those right now.
All right, so the people are able to spend for things that they have to have.
So at this point, they do need to spend money for things they have, they've had orders queued up since January, we're releasing those now, and so those were all to be real, real orders for real supplies so that those could immediately get executed, and so those are part of my calculation. I didn't, so when I took the, I took those as funds expended, even though I knew the, they were not out the door. So I calculated them as expended. The question is sort of what else do they need and did they budget, did they heed the advice and really only spend up to their 10 percent, 10 percent reduction, or did they go over? The culture here is that budget freezes don't last, and when the budget freeze is lifted, we go back to normal, and so that is part of my, another concern I have is that people didn't really believe there was a budget freeze. They didn't really believe that we had a deficit. So we'll, we'll find out.
Thank you.
That's the 1920 update.
Thank you. Yes.
Just out of curiosity, should we just do these three while we're here? Because they don't, they probably fit here better than an amnesty committee update. Can I just talk about these?
So for the consent item, for the lost book and visual arts and the establishment of the gift account, so these are three items that have emerged through the cleanup that I've embarked on with student activities where these funds were not, they were put in student activities account, legally, they are not allowed to be in student activity accounts. So lost book money is when, and particularly librarians are wonderful and fabulous about this, is a student loses a book, they need to replace the book, they charge for the cost of the book replacement and, and there's a transactional exchange for that. And statutorial, statutorily, the lost book account is authorized and we need to just establish one for each building, and that's what this vote does. And some, Jeremy Stull has been working with Scott Moore and the librarians on how to make that transition. They all have very different practices and also making sure that they know and understand sort of the mechanisms of, and the administrative support that's available to them for collecting money, placing, replacing the book, and so they know that, that they, what they were trying, what they were doing before, we're just replicating the, some of the procedures that they need to follow. With regard to the visual arts program, that also needs to be established, these were going through student activities and really should be under chapter 7147 for lab material fees. And it involves ceramics, jewelry arts and metals, photography and sculpture for our visual arts program. So this actually allows, actually gives her a little bit more flexibility in terms of when she needs to make purchases out of two funds, she can actually do that on one purchase order rather than getting a check from student activities and a check from the town, and so there's some efficiencies there. The fund balance stays in that fund from one year to the next, it doesn't close out to the general fund, so that balance stays as is. The third item, the establishment of a gift account for Brookline High School Community Assistance. This particular fund has been in existence for a number of years, also running through student activities and not really appropriate, because it's not money generated by students. They have a particular donor that has class, graduating class, that has been donating funds to this, and what the social workers at the high school provide and do is sort of bridge support for families that are in crisis. So they have purchased coats and food and gift cards for food and a variety of things. That was in student activities, it really belongs in its own separate fund, and so we are asking for the committee to establish, establish that fund. And also, also by doing this is that if there are donors, I can work with donors around their tax, tax deduction, tax issues with any donations given to this fund. Having it in student activities, I can't do that. So that's the purpose of, so these are three fixes that are coming out of the student activities review that we did this past fall.
So I have a question, because we're, we're, actually, there's a warrant in front of town meeting in May to establish a revolving fund for the South Brookline, Brookline High School bus. So that, that one actually has to be created by town meeting, we're asking town meeting to create a revolving fund. Is that gonna be true of the lost book money and the visual arts program, or are they a different kind of revolving?
So the visual arts, no, because that's under chapter 71. Lost books, probably, but I still need school committee vote, they, I'm probably gonna end up, it'll show up next year.
It's a process, okay.
It's a process.
Thank you.
It'll show up next year.
Could I help my curiosity about that?
I think I can only get, yeah, I, we, we thought we were only dealing with, we were late to getting to the warrant, because I thought we were only dealing with one particular school and account. And we, you know, you pull the string and then you ask the question, you find out, okay, we have more. So we needed to really find out what the librarians were doing and what the departments were doing and making sure we really understood their supports and needs, because this is one of those things that can be very disruptive to a school if we change it too quickly. So I need a school committee vote to get the fund set up, and then eventually I'll need town meeting vote to establish it, but there's, other than, they just need to establish it. And I have to check for Division of Local Services if that's still true. It's not, the transportation revolving fund requires a vote every year, this will not require, this just requires a vote to get set up and then it's done.
Okay, are there, any other questions, comments? And then, there's...
We have to vote this, right?
We do.
But there's, it's all the consent agenda.
It was on the...
Took it out, though.
We took it out of the consent agenda, right. Do you want to do a fourth one? The donations to the elementary school gift accounts?
Those are, that is just a list of this month's donations? So we received donations from the 8K through 8PTOs for a, from Brookline Makerspace and Innovation Day contribution that is occurring. We received, Pierce and Lawrence received donations from Global Partners for Educational Alliance Program that is running. Brookline Community Foundation gave Lincoln a thousand dollar donation for composting, and Runkel PTO gave Runkel a $593 donation for composting. So that, you've already voted as part of the consent agenda and...
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
We took it out.
I thought you only took the three out.
No, we took all four out. So I would entertain, if someone wanted to move each of these individually but all at once, I would entertain four motions from one person. Anyone want to do that? Unless anybody wants to take them apart or discuss them. So, yes, thank you. So we have a series of motions for each of these items that were on the consent agenda. Does anybody want to stick up those motions?
Thank you.
Ms. Schreiner, Oldham, does anybody want to discuss anything as we do each of those motions?
I just have a very quick question. Do we know why the Brookline Community Foundation gave $1,000 to Lincoln?
Yes, that's for the, oh, because they asked.
Oh, right. And so, I think there's just sort of, I just have a question to go back to the community foundation with, which is that, you know, composting is a big issue, I mean, in and of itself, there's a lot that goes into composting, so I know that there's a broader, I'm not arguing with this particular gift, but as I think about composting across the district, there are a lot of schools that want to compost, I just think that we need more of a holistic approach, because I think we don't want to be creating inequities with, by accepting gifts.
Yes, please.
Something, because I was involved with this, and if you remember, when the students came to us, they had asked to try and do the whole school and for the rest of the year. The Brookline Foundation, oh, stop, sorry. I'm very sorry. They usually accept applications for grants once, twice a year, and this was out of cycle, but sometimes they do an out of cycle. The students applied to the community fund for an exceptional time, and I think that's why that money is there. My understanding is the Runkel community wanted to do it, and so they asked the, their PTO to fund it, and that's why theirs is there.
Right, so, no, I remember that, that was the last...
Theirs may be coming with one, too, actually.
Right, no, I remember, that was last time's conversation. I guess my question is, how are we thinking about it?
Okay, so the next step is, there is a warrant article for town meeting that I assume we will be discussing here. On composting?
No, it didn't, didn't make it in.
It didn't make it in. There was either, but I didn't see it when I threw it.
Oh.
Yes.
I thought the solid waste advisory committee... Take it back.
But it will be. Certainly, as we have discussed at school committee, Ms. Dunn has been coordinating with Department of Public Works to look at this as a broader townwide issue, and we're hoping that, that even, that there may be an approach to financing composting that's more broad-based and that can allow us to accelerate this work throughout our buildings.
But I guess my question was, if, are these one-year gifts and just, and so composting stops in September, like it's, this is a little strange.
It's...
I'm just not, I'm just not sure I understand the sustainability.
So it wasn't started for everybody at once, like these were pilot projects, some teacher initiated, some student initiated, some parent initiated, and this will happen, it's just, it's gonna take some time.
No, it's great that that happened. I'm asking the question of what's gonna happen in September when we're no longer doing this?
Yeah, to your specific question, it is not sustainable.
Right.
It's not funded past the end of the school year, which is, the goal is to work with DPW and, you know, the, what I have in front of me is just the projected increased cost of, of, of just the cost of removing trash. You know, it's, it's the right thing to do and ultimately, it's the right financial thing, it's the right thing to do environmentally in terms of composting. So we had to figure that out with the town, and Matt is not here, Matt has been doing that work with DPW, and I certainly don't know the details of where he is in that, and I'm not sure if Ms. Dunn does. So we're hoping to accomplish that partnership with DPW so that it is sustainable, but the direct answer to your question is, as of right now, it's not sustainable financially past the end of this year.
So just in general, I don't love acceptance for things like this that are not sustainable. I mean, we're in the middle of it, we're in April already, so there's not really much to do about this. I just feel like this is one of those that it's weird to start and then stop without any sustainability plan on the other side. We've sort of pushed back on that normally. So I'm happy to vote for this, I just really think that we need a, an answer.
So what I can share is that Matt, has Matt Gillis, our Director of Operations, we started this fiscal year with the plan of continuing composting at the high school and January timeframe, rolling out composting at Coolidge Corner School. A student presentation accelerated that, all of those cycles. He, in the last few months, has been working with, and working with either the PTO at a school, the Brookline Community Foundation, any, like, he's been trying to sort of corral sort of all of the interest to get an idea and be able to put a budget and financing plan together for next year so that he and Ed Gilbert, who's the person at DPW, that he would work with and solid waste management... he would work with and Solid Waste Management, that he could be helpful in assisting, sort of what will the cost be. So he's pretty close, I think, to having a report ready in terms of what the magnitude of that is. With current pricing, they've, they've had to get into bidding. Some of the schools, because of the donations and what they want to do, they've had to do some bidding, so we have some real pricing. So he's pretty close to having a report available for that, for, for knowing what the, the lead, the September, you know, next year cost is. And is reaching out and working with DPW on that piece and their budget. Because they're not, they weren't planning for composting either and converting their portions of their budget or savings into this either. So they're, we're, we're trying to work with them.
And last question, and I will stop, but do, do the Runkle and Lincoln communities know that this is over?
Yes, yeah, they, yeah, they do, yeah.
Unless, unless we figure something out.
And, yeah, and Matt has shared with them what he can in terms of either purchasing some bins. He knows he has money to purchase them with, so he's partnered with them also to help extend some of their money, but not enough to have it continue because we don't have the resources in our budget.
I mean, I'm fully in favor of this. I just want to be really clear. I just, I'm worried about the equity and sustainability piece, but I'm, it would be great if we can find a way to do this. I think it would be a good priority.
Also, correct me if I'm wrong, but this all, sort of, we're back to, it falls under the Food Services Revolving Fund, too, right? Isn't there, I mean, we're accepting the gift, but composting has been, I think you told us previously that it was an expense under Food, the Food Services umbrella.
So high school and Coolidge Corner were budgeted under Food Service.
But there's also this kind of, where the money is, is the money in budget or is the money in the revolving?
There's no money in our operating budget.
Right. That's what I'm trying to get at.
There's no money in our operating budget, so that would be DPW that we would need to work with and coordinate with.
And I guess I would ask whether there's a place for this conversation at Food Services Advisory Committee as well. I, I don't know. I don't know.
But, you know, it's still, it's coming down to funds. I mean, everybody says yes, yes, yes. Nobody has said no, that I know of. However, I don't care where you have the conversation, if you don't have funds, it doesn't go anywhere. And so we, somehow we have to figure this out. Because it's frustrating. It's frustrating for the students who have done some wonderful presentations. They've been doing the work. It's frustrating for the adults who have been, who've been helping them and advising them, and it's frustrating for us because we've all said yes, we want composting. And here we are with a school with a thousand dollars, another school with five hundred ninety-three dollars, which won't go very far, I don't believe. And, you know, we had, so we can bring it to, to the Food Advisory, but without the money, without knowing who's going to own that, it's not going to make any difference.
I just, I think, I agree, and I think that, that the key in sustainability is this landing with the right department, and it's DPW, and so that's the reason that Matt is working with DPW. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee is advocating to the Select Board that DPW incorporate this expense for school composting into their budgets. There's a lot happening. I think the frustrating thing for all of us is we want to know the answer right now. Because I'm absolutely with you on, on everything that you just listed. So the, the, the push is continuing to really get this in the right, in the right place. So.
And if I can just expand a little bit on that, you know, the right place is DPW. They pay now for the trash collection, you know. We are going to make less trash, trash collection, so there is some savings, like you said, you know, and it makes sense for it to be there. And Susan, in answer to your question, oftentimes you sort of have to put your foot in the water before you swim, and I think this is that sort of thing where we're, you know, there's starts and stops and things like that, but we know where we want to get to.
That's fine. I think that in the past, though, we have gotten into situations like this where in September there are complaints that we are canceling a program. Why are we canceling the composting program?
No, I think this, this is clear, except for the high school, and I don't know if Coolidge Corner School is in the budget or not.
Yeah.
Except for those two, which are larger schools, you know, it's clear to the other ones that that, that we're working on it, we're trying, but this, the money's not here.
But they won't be surprised, and that's, that's all.
What, does one, con-
Some people will be. Some people are going to be surprised.
Yeah, I, I do think that, I do think that some people will be surprised, even though I think it's been clear, the message has been clear to people organizing that it just ends this year. I think that there's an expectation that we're composting and then people, that, so, like, students seeing a composting, and then the program, if we don't find funding, is going to stop. So I do think there is some danger of hearing as if it's stopping, which is why it's really important that we try to figure out how we can make it not stop.
And I just, I would add, maybe as a final, I don't know if it's the final part of the conversation, but, you know, it, I, I do believe that in working with DPW, it's, as Ms. Dunn said earlier about what town, part, town departments, what portion of the budget supports schools. If you remember, part of our revenue challenge this year was an increased charge via the Town School Partnership for refuse removal. So I think, you know, this is actually, you know, I think that there's a leverage point that we have because it was a, it's a specific cost that hits the school department via the Town School Partnership relative to refuse removal. So, you know, that's, that is, I, I think it does give us a leverage to get to the successful endpoint, which is composting, right? The successful landing place is composting in all of our schools. So Ms. Dunn and I are deeply committed to making that happen, and hear all of the concerns of the, of the committee, and we'll keep you updated as, as the, the work progresses.
All right. We have four motions on the table with four seconds. Yes.
No, I meant to go back.
Ready to vote? Okay. All in favor of these motions? Thank you very much. That is unanimous. All right. We are still on finance with fees, fines, and charges, including materials fee and athletics. Yes?
I just want to sort of preface this that this is an introduction. There's no decision point at this, at the conclusion of this, but this is really the first time that I have actually presented to the school committee in my time here a chart and a table of the various fees that are charged to, to students and families in the district. And this should be an annual review, even if fees aren't changing, this should be an annual review so people know and understand what we are charging for and why. An update of, of this is in your memo that was in front of you this evening, and it begins on page eight of the memo that was at your table. So, and page eight deals with general fund receipts. I don't actually have a slide of that. There will be more discussion about general fund receipts. We're doing some work on that. And what those are is when you charge a fee, but there is no statutory allowance for a revolving fund. So, for example, on page eight of my memo, you'll see transcript fees. Transcript fees are transcripts. When you graduate, you need a high school official or unofficial. When you're a graduate, generally, there's a fee charged for that. Well, that fee really is a general fund receipt because we're not staffing extra staff at the high school to generate that transcript. We can charge for that transcript, but that should really be a general fund fee to essentially reimburse the taxpayer for, for their portion of supporting our, our budget. So more information will come on that, and as we do the Student Activities Review, Reviews and Audits, other fees will come forward like that, that are really funds that are not ours to keep statutorily. Yes?
Can I ask a question about that? Not exactly clear. These are funds that are generated for, for-
So there is no cost to the district to generate the transcript fee, just to, in turn, we, so we have, we have staff in our departments that, we, we, we have them, but we are allowed and can charge for transcripts. There's no extra time that we-
Why should it come back to the school?
It does come back to the school. It comes back to the school through your Town School Partnership allocation, because if we, so one thing that was, so surprise, so more to come. I think this is a different, another presentation for me to talk to you about, about general fund root revenue and how that is actually a good thing and how we can maximize that to be a good thing, and where, where those pieces are. So let me, as, so in terms of student fees, fines, and charges, we passed that policy a year ago. And so we have athletic fees, materials fee. We will be asking for a vote on new materials fee. That's been increasing at three percent. International tuition, which is a SEVIS program, is a one-year exchange for you, for this committee to vote a new rate for that for FY '20. We generally get about one student a year under that program. South Brookline Bus Transportation is the same four hundred dollar fee that we had last year. BEEP tuition, we're, we're going to have Vicki Milstein here, the Principal of BEEP, either on the fourth or the twenty-fifth, to present regarding the BEEP tuition. She's requesting a two percent increase to her tuition rates, and those are all listed there. Lost Books is on here, and that is not a fee specific, but a word problem in terms of describing what can be charged. So you would be voting language regarding the replacement that's printed here. Typically, I've had school committee vote this chart, which essentially, as opposed to voting, voting each and every one, is you vote the chart annually and to make that efficient process. A school lunch you will be receiving. Matt Gillis will be here to do a presentation with regards to increasing school lunch this evening as part of the Finance Subcommittee. We floated the idea of doing an interim price increase on our premium meals amount, so that is moving from four twenty-five to seven dollars. This year, to four fifty to nine dollars. It says ten dollars on here. We will edit that, nine dollars. And that is essentially so that we can bring sushi back as a premium meal, and we can offer it as a reimbursable meal so our free and reduced lunch students can also participate in those, and also so that we can do some specialty sandwiches, specialty meals that cost us a little bit more to do, and to be able to do that at both the K eight level as well as the high school level. And the school lunch per-
Sorry, I just wanted you to confirm what, what I think we all know, which is that at premium prices, premium meals are available to all students regardless of lunch status, and students who qualify for free and reduced lunch can purchase the premium meals with no additional charge at, either free or at the reduced rate.
Correct. And the reason for the lunch price increase, increase is labor, as well as the last lunch price change was 2015, so we've had some price increases in goods and commodities.
[laughing].
Also, school committee should be voting the tuition rates for the high school summer programs. The high school rates are going unchanged. Deputy Superintendent Nicole Gittens is proposing elimination of a fee for Project Achieve, Discovery, and Explore. The Finance Club Committee is asking for some additional information around, around that, but essentially, Ms. Gittens or Dr. Gittens has, has done some reallocation within her teaching and learning budgets to be able to fund the summer program, because it was partially subsidized by the operating budget, is to fund solely out of the operating budget with roughly about a thirty, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar increase over what was existing. So I will get some more information in response to some of the questions from the Finance Subcommittee. The Adult and Community Ed Program, generally, I have this as a word problem. We have ranges in terms of where and what they charge for their programs. They are not proposing any kind of fee increase to their rates. Performing Arts, Performing Arts, we have fees that relate to students attending a variety of competitions or performances or award performances. I'm going to get this wrong, even though my daughter did it with cello, the MIA competitions, musical instrument competitions are basically sort of exam competitions and performance. There are costs associated with that. It's not quite a field trip. They do, the Performing Arts Program also does a annual performance and trip out to Six Flags, and that is also not really Student Activities based. Visual Arts, you just approved their revolving fund. Now you're approving their fees. Those have not come to the school committee. And then there are a variety of extracurricular activities that are non-club based that also charge fees, and I'm anticipating, I'm having this here because I'm anticipating that as we go through Student Activities, and I work on that next year, lots of things are going to come up and pop up, and I would like to make sure that I can anticipate that we have a formula in place by policy and vote of the school committee when those, when those happen and emerge. So this would be the vote that you would take, is to, not asking for this tonight, but generally, I would have school committee vote this entire table as one vote rather than each and every one individually. So that's a foreshadow of future meetings. Just want to recap with, we are planning presentations for Food Service, Athletics, and BEEP on either April fourth or April twenty-fifth, school committee meetings to review their budgets and so that you understand what their fees are comparable district, what their budgets are. And I will add an information item on the fee reduction from Dr. Gittens in paper form for one of those two meetings. So that concludes my presentation on, my introduction, I should say, on student fees, fines, and charges.
Any questions for Deputy Superintendent Dunn? Okay, thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda is a question of whether the school committee wishes to hold public hearings on any town meeting warrant articles, presumably for the purpose of then opining to or advising town meeting as we might, as we might decide. There are a number of warrant articles that either, in the, in the town meeting warrant that either affect or involve school, the school department or the school committee, or perhaps just, there's, there's several that mention the schools. And we'll go through, go through, I, I kind of have identified some, but as three of us are town meeting members, I also rely on Ms. Scotto and Mr. Pearlman in their review of the warrant, and anybody else who's taken upon themselves to read the town meeting warrant in advance of the May town meeting. Yeah, this is what you, yeah, great. All right. So the, there, there's a couple of, of fairly routine articles. Article five, which is the, the, the school bus transportation creation of the revolving fund, I believe. And then Article six is a debt rescission for the Driscoll HVC project, which is now no longer needs to be part of the capital plan because there's a whole project at Driscoll that won't involve redoing the ancient pipes. And I guess because they are about the schools, we might choose to support them. I think we, I certainly think that they're straightforward and that we need to support them. And if we're going to have a hearing on warrant articles, we don't necessarily have to have a whole series of them. We could have one hearing and list these in there, and if nobody comes to talk to us about it, then we can also, somebody would have to draft a statement, and we'd have to do that. But anybody want to speak to either of those? Whether we should have a hearing? Do we want to, do we want to support this practice of having hearings about anything that mentions the schools at town meeting? That are-
As I was reading through the warrant articles and thinking about this, it's an interesting question about the difference between, say, for example, the school bus, the South Brookline Revolving Fund and the school buses, and that one might be in a different bucket than more of a, you know, a policy statement. And so maybe we would want to look at them with that sort of lens of, is it a, if it's a request coming from the school department, for some reason, it doesn't seem like it would make sense for the school committee to also have a statement about why we support it. But if it's a warrant article- But if it's a warrant article coming from another source that the school committee might want to weigh in on because it impacts the school department, maybe we would want a statement in that case?
Or perhaps, might you say that because we've asked for a revolving fund in the warrant article, do we need to have a hearing about it? It's already in the warrant, and we don't need to necessarily advise on it?
I think the idea that Ms. Schreiner Oldham's alluding to is that any time that we are making a request to town meeting, it's fairly obvious that we endorse something that we are requesting, whereas if it's a, an individual town meeting member or a resident who put together the warrant article, then the general public doesn't necessarily know where we stand on it.
So to be clear, you're both suggesting that we do not need to hold a hearing on Articles Five or Six because our, our advocacy is manifest in our request that these things be granted or done. Okay? Anybody feel differently about that?
No. I'm just reading six, and I hadn't realized that they were looking to close it out, and worst-case scenario, if the override doesn't pass, don't we need these funds to do something with the HVAC?
So we will have an opportunity after May 7th to consider that eventuality?
Fine, then let's go with it.
And we'll also have an indication at that point as to whether, what, what will happen?
That's another question. The Article 11 is reciprocal easement rights and approvals necessary to the Brooklyn High School project. Ms. Dickoff?
This has been through many, many conversations in many committees, and I think the, you know, it is, I would strongly support favorable action and support by the school committee because this is, is literally on the critical path to getting our building going forward, continuing to go forward, so. I mean, essentially, the notion is that the MBTA, for us to, it's part of the broader discussion about air rates, and specifically, they want access to their equipment, there's a, the parking spots are moving a little bit, anyway, there's, there's some stuff in there, but I don't think it's anything that's particularly exciting, unless anyone's excited about easements. It's, it's been through a lot of committees. Oh, oh, Mr. Glover got it. Do you have any issue with this? Okay, if Mr. Glover doesn't have any issue, I mean, Mikey likes it, so I think we're okay.
And you don't see any need to have further hearing, to have hearing or further statement from the school?
No, no, I would actually put it on the hearing list. I can't imagine anyone's going to come, but at any rate, I'm happy to give...
Right, so you...
There have been discussions about this, there actually is a relevant discussion about parking, but that's not related to easement, so, so if people come, they will not be coming on the easement, they'll be coming on some other issues on, on parking.
But so, as co-chair of the high school project, you feel that passage of this warrant article is sufficiently vital and timely that you would like school committee as the using agency that's going to benefit from the new building to weigh in?
Yes.
Okay? Any, we're all good? Moving on, we have Article 20, free menstrual hygiene projects, products in public buildings. It mentions, it does not, because the schools are autonomous, it, or it sees the petitioner doesn't ask that the schools be in the group of buildings that are required to do this, but suggests that the schools might also consider it and choose to do so and vote it. Yes, Mr.?
So we, we had a pretty in-depth discussion about this at policy a few weeks ago. I can talk about that a little bit if you'd like. So, you know, the, the concerns, particularly at the, your assessment was correct. There's, there's encouragement that we, we consider taking up a similar measure on our side, although this particular warrant article wouldn't affect the schools. You know, the, the issues at the, in our schools are, quite frankly, probably not acceptable or I find unacceptable in terms of the, the access that, that students have to, what's the correct terminology?
Menstrual hygiene.
Menstrual hygiene products, excuse me. They really only can, at the high school at least, students can only get menstrual hygiene products in the nurse's office regardless of where they are in the school. So if they're very far away from the, from the nurse's office, that can be problematic. So it's a, it's a situation that we need to address in some way, shape, or form. Doesn't necessarily have to be through this warrant article or a particular policy, but it's probably something that we should consider addressing. You know, some of the, the concerns around endorsing this particular article is that if we endorse this article, even though it doesn't impact the schools, it sort of suggests that we are going to pass a similar policy with respect to the schools, and I don't know if we have enough information at this time to sort of fully understand the cost implications of, of what that might mean. And we also haven't talked about, fully about whether what we would do would, would match this particular warrant article. In particular, we had a lot of discussion as to what bathrooms are the right places to have menstrual hygiene products. This warrant article, I believe, or as it was discussed with us, means all bathrooms, male bathrooms, female bathrooms, non-gender specific bathrooms, and there's a, there's a discussion to be had amongst us as to whether that's the right thing for schools. In particular, whether there should be menstrual hygiene products in boys' bathrooms. While we want to be cognizant of female-bodied males who may be using boys' bathrooms, we also want to be cognizant, cognizant of the potential for wastefulness by mischievous young men, and, and whether that makes sense. And so there's issues around that that need to be thought about. There's issues around proper disposal facilities, as that can be an ocean issue for janitors and whatnot. And so we just haven't, and again, there's, there's cost issues that we haven't talked about. So I think there's, there's, there's a lot to talk about still about this, and I don't know if we came to a conclusion about whether we should, I don't think we came to a place, although the discussion is still ongoing, and others feel free to jump in, as to whether we should, whether the subcommittee felt that we should affirmatively endorse this particular warrant article. However, I, I think the consensus is that's, we need to do something, whether it's through policy, whether it's through, through whatever. I mean, it, we don't have a policy that says you have to have toilet paper in every bathroom. You know, we can, we can address these issues outside of sort of a formal action, and I would encourage us to, to sort of, at a bare minimum, think about that.
I'm sorry, I was just going to add to what Mr. Glover said. I mean, I think that we, we had a lot of conversation, and we, we never came to any decisions about recommendations for what schools would do, much less have a conversation about whether or not we would support specifically what's in the warrant article. And we, there was some question about finance, like as far as what it would cost to implement this and what that would look like exactly, although I walked away from the meeting feeling that we were very supportive of doing something, we just didn't, weren't sure what that something was and how that would be implemented. There was some conversation about what that might look like at the high school, what that might look like in six through eight areas of schools. How many bathrooms were we talking about? Are we looking at all bathrooms, gender-specific and gender non-specific bathrooms? And so, and we just didn't have enough information on like what that would cost implementing, if we could budget it, and whether or not there'd be phased implementation over time, which is part of the warrant article, I believe. There is some phased implementation in the warrant article, but we, we didn't have any, we didn't come to any decisions. I don't know what the, what other people think about this. It'll be interesting, it was just a few of us there at the subcommittee.
So the question before us is really whether we want to opine in any way to town meeting on this warrant article or on this subject. And I do think that we can do one without doing the other. So for instance, we could simply advise, because the topic is now being taken up in detail by town meeting, we could advise town meeting of what we are doing or planning to do, or our own deliberations in policy. We could share with town, I mean, because people are concerned with this issue in, in the town's buildings, and as we well know, the school buildings are a significant part of the town buildings, and people will be curious about how it would be dealt with in our buildings, even though the warrant article doesn't speak to it. So we don't, it seems to me, anyway, that we don't necessarily need to advise on whether town meeting should vote one way or another on that warrant article, and they still might be appreciative if we had something to say, but issues, for instance, like what the cost is, might be necessary to get more, we might need more information in order to give them, I mean, more than, obviously, you could report from policy to the school committee, and we could pass that report forward, but if we wanted to know more about what we thought we'd be doing, we'd have to do some thinking and deciding quick because of the cost, I think, seems to be primarily because of the cost implications, although certainly questions of where and exactly how and all that.
So I, as one individual, I don't think we should be taking positions on issues that don't affect the schools, meaning I would, so I would not be supportive of us having a hearing on whether the town should do something, so just to state that out loud. I'm fully supportive in having a hearing on the warrant article and using that to raise some of these issues and make a statement to town meeting about what we are doing, and I think it is investigating them, getting issues of operations, issues of financing, issues, I mean, there are like, there are a lot of issues, so I think we can certainly, if we are in a place where we're looking at those, I don't know if there's a timeline to commitment, nor is there a timeline commitment to composting or a bunch of other things we want to do and that we're supportive of. So at any rate, I think I'm perfectly comfortable, is it just me, if we have a, a public hearing, people can express their sense of its importance, we can go through some of our things, and we can write that up and put it in the combined report, so people have a sense of what, what our pathway is.
Anybody else like that idea, don't like that idea? If we have a hearing?
I also just wanted to mention that at subcommittee, we also had the opportunity to hear from, I guess she's not listed as a cosponsor, but there was a high school student who came and spoke very eloquently on some of the issues at the high school and issues surrounding, and why this article is important, and I think that it was a very, I benefited a lot from the conversation. It raised a lot of issues about gender-neutral bathrooms, it raised a lot of issues about accessibility to, to these products, and, and I thought that that was very fruitful, and I would assume that if we're having a hearing, we would notify the petitioner and that the high school student would be very interested in coming to speak more on it to school committee, and that all of us could benefit from hearing that input as well.
Right. In, in general, Ms. Quinn, I think any time we hold a hearing, it'd be important to reach out to all the petitioners.
Can I just add on to, Julie was just sparking some of my, my thoughts. I, I would be great if she could come and speak to us. She was very passionate about it and had really spent a lot of time thinking about it from the perspective of students and what their experience is like, particularly at the high school, the loss of travel time and distance that Mr. Glover mentioned, as well as, so that travel time could cause you to be late to class, and if you were late to class by so much time, even if you're there for the last 45 minutes and you've missed the first period, part of that period, so many of those equal abdances, and that can affect your grades, and so there were like academic implications of access, and there was some issues of equity. There were, there was just, there was a lot to unpack. There was, there definitely, I think, is a lot of thinking to be done around this, so I would, I like, I would love, I would love to have her come in and talk with us, the petitioners, and just so that you could all hear yourselves what that was like.
Okay, so we'll put that on the list as well.
One thing that would be important, I think, is to get information and possibly Superintendent Bott could, from the nurses as to, you know, what their thoughts are about this and where, you know, how much usage there is presently.
And what about, what, what is reasonable or feasible? We don't know when we're talking about, we don't have a date for this here, but to get some kind of, my recollection is that there's nothing, there, there are no cost parameters that are in either the warrant article or the discussion, the, the, the petitioner's presentation or comments or whatever it's called.
So the, Mr. Simmons did some preliminary calculations, and I just, I couldn't find them today on where I took those notes, so I think I remember what those numbers are, but I'm not going to quote it. It's several hundred thousand dollars to, to install across all of the bathrooms.
It was like $300, it's $300, $350 per dispenser.
$350 per, yeah.
And then, and he didn't have any information about the cost to fill them. That was just the cost for actually starting it up and putting the...
So I can...
We talked about that as well, policy.
So I certainly can work, the, the school department can work with Mr. Simmons to get some more concrete information about costs, because it's twofold. It's the installation cost that would come from the building department, and then Mr. Gillis on the, on the resupply cost. So we'll have that information, at least a, a, a strong estimate of the costs at the, for the public hearing.
Okay.
Ms. Cotto has it?
Yes.
I just want to put some support behind Helen's idea about talking to the school nurses, because when you begin to mention the amount of money that this would cost just to have them there, the question is, you can certainly get the supplies that you need by going to the nurse's office, but there are these distances and so forth. So there might be other alternatives, that there were certain places in certain parts of the building or certain people you could, I mean, to me, looking at that amount of money, when you know perfectly well, a lot of it is just going to be wasted because, you know, kids, kids are kids. And I think if just getting, if getting the information, how much is, how much, what supply do the nurses have to have at this point? Where would the nurses assume that these other places in the school would be, that kids would need them? I just think that's, I think that's something we ought to do before we have a full-blown opinion on this.
So let's reach out to staff, principals, nurses, you know, middle school teachers, whatever, and, and see if anybody has any bright ideas, because we want to solve the problem, is what we want to do, right? Although, obviously, bathrooms are a pretty convenient place to have these supplies available.
Sort of, I'm sorry. There were, I just want to bring up back, highlight, there were some issues about equity and access to products, and so availability, and also conversation about female, help me, Julie, female-bodied...
Individuals, I guess.
Thank you.
Individuals.
If I is male, get, gaining access and whether or not the nurse was at appropriate place. We, we went into some conversation about location. I just want to bring that up, so like I, I'm hearing that, and I think we all are interested in finding some solution, but there were other things to sort of consider as part of that conversation about where those locations might be most appropriate, most private. I don't know, so I'm just bringing that back up to the top.
Don't we have gender-neutral bathrooms?
But not every, not, not always everywhere, yeah.
I, I think that there are challenges, happy to report on the challenges. We do have gender-neutral bathrooms, and there are challenges with those bathrooms. Unfortunately, there are students at the high school where, that use those bathrooms for vaping, for example, which makes it not necessarily a place where a student might want to go. The student might prefer to go to the full bathroom that matches their, the gender they identify with, and so it, it's, it is a much more complicated question than simply, you know, sort of having the gender-neutral bathrooms available.
Warrant Article 23 is on the electrification of the, of the town's vehicle fleet as, as, if I may reduce it vastly, as new leases or new purchases are made, if the cost is, if, if the cost is no more than 25% higher than a petroleum-fueled vehicle, and if it, the alternative, electric alternative can do the same things that are needed to be done, which, for instance, in terms of school buses, taking long field trips and stuff... stuff, might be in question. Matt Gillis has done some yeoman's work on preliminary research and has put together a memo that was, has not been distributed to the full school committee yet. And, yeah, I mean, particularly if we're going to have a hearing, let's get the memo. It's complicated. The, as it turns out, the school buses, the manufacturers are few and they haven't really gotten very far in terms of, it just isn't, it's not a technology that's ready for prime time and as reflected in the cost, the incremental cost, which is even over a period of time is something like double. And, yeah, no, we can pass this out now, but I'm not sure we need to debate it now. I think that it's an important Warren article, it talks about the school buses, and I think we do probably, I think we probably want to take it up and have a hearing, and, but we don't have to go through the details now because that's what we'll do when we have a hearing and have a discussion.
Could I just, for the committee, as you review this, this is a memo that Mr. Gillis prepared from his done and for me, based on some initial questions that we had asked him. What you see in this is, it's only an initial look at, so this may change between, it's likely some of the numbers will change between now and a hearing, should the committee hold the hearing. What we asked Mr. Gillis to do was to, given the capital cost with electric buses, to give us a proposal of what it would cost to bring yellow school bus service back in-house as opposed to through leasing. In particular, because of leasing of electric buses, it seems that all of the costs of that, both the capital cost of purchase and infrastructure costs, would be borne by the town via the lease. And so it seemed more reasonable, if that were the course, to benefit from the capital investment, given that electric motors last far longer than conventional fossil fuel motors. Just as a, so just very briefly, you'll see in the front, the purchase price of an electric bus is about $365,000 versus a $90,000 purchase price for a conventional diesel. And then what you see is, some, on the subsequent pages are things that Matt sort of put together based on price quotes that other towns have received, so, for the purchase of electric buses, and then all the different costs associated with charging stations and the cost for drivers, salary, health insurance, pension, et cetera, that currently are a part of the lease. So, there's just, it's sort of a combined information as you go through this of both electric bus costs and bringing the transportation service back in-house. I will say that the, everything that we've found so far, the technology simply doesn't exist for our van services, which is primarily for our special education service. The company that we work with has piloted some technology and the, they're simply, the vans are on the road too long and in use for too long, and the charge doesn't hold for long enough for the van, the van service. It's just not a feasible technology, whereas it is more so at this point with the yellow school buses. There are complicating factors relative to this Warren article I think the committee needs to consider, such as, you know, electric buses for now are not super feasible for trips, say, to Plymouth Plantation, because they don't charge on the highway. Well, you might, you might be using the brakes a lot, or you may not. But there's not going to be the infrastructure to plug in the buses for a field trip. There are possibly some benefits of bringing transportation in-house, which I won't go into right now, but just some initial information for how to look at, again, this preliminary draft relative to any consideration you have about the Warren article.
I just would suggest that one thing that we do is explain to people what we have. So, for example, we have some vehicles that are covered under this Warren article that are separate from the buses, so, like, it's bigger than buses. And I think that because vehicles, buses and vans, there are different answers on all of them, it just might be worth explaining that a little bit in the framing of this. And like, here's how many vehicles we have, here's how many buses we have, here's how many we lease, just, there's just a little bit of information that could probably go...
Yeah, this was simply the, yeah, response to the question about electric.
No, absolutely. But if we're going to try to make this more of a public document in preparation for, or just even something that we're going to then submit to, given that the Warren article only partially covers us and this is, we're just creating our own statement, it just seems a little more...
Absolutely. We have two, we have two cars, just for context. So in terms of the cars, there are two.
I wanted to mention the cars because how, just taking a car, how long does it take to charge that car? And how many charging stations would we need to add if we were to do this? I'm not asking you to answer that question.
Well, I mean, I can answer that the town would have to install quite a bit of infrastructure relative to charging stations. I think that the answer for the cars, so our building service division uses the two cars right now, so Maculus and Ed Clancy use the two cars, given that they're driving them primarily in town. They're recharging as you drive. The brakes are recharging the battery. So the need to plug them in during the day, for have a long charge time during the day is just, it's less. And given that they're traveling around to schools, and for any town department under this Warren article, the charging stations would have to be added throughout town. You know, different buildings, different school buildings, different parking lots, DPW facilities. So there's just, there's a lot of question for the town relative to infrastructure for charging that would have to be addressed.
So, on Saturday the 16th, two Saturdays ago, I actually spent my afternoon at the Sierra Club's municipal, statewide municipal leaders climate action summit. And representative, as the sole representative of Brookline, there were a couple of select board members last year who joined me there, but this year it was just me. I was also one of only three school committee members that showed up, of about, there must have been 60 or 70 people. It was actually quite a lively afternoon. And one of the main breakout sessions was on fleet electrification. And there were a lot of interesting things came up. I took a lot of notes. And then on my drive back from Framingham State, where we met, I called Werner Lowey, the chair of the climate action committee, and to make sure that, to ask if any of this was happening in Brookline, which a lot of it already was, and to just talk to him about various issues that came up through the day, and that was good conversation. One of the things that came up was that we were, on that day, there were two days left until the last day for filing for the first round of monies from the Volkswagen, Volkswagen settlement, which is hundreds of millions of dollars for Volkswagen lying or, you know, programming their diesel engines wrong to misreport their mileage and everything. And that monies are being distributed. And he said, yes, indeed, we were in there early, Brookline, and we're spending our settlement money that we were able to achieve installing charging stations. And not only just, they're sort of all along Beacon Street, I think, I can't remember whether you said there was four Level 2s and one super level, whatever it's called, high. There's, the Level 2 is a pretty quick charge, and then there's this one that's even quicker, where you can actually get a meaningful charge in some number of minutes, 15, 13 minutes or something. And he said the idea was that they, those super ones would actually be on people's smartphones, and if somebody was driving up to the main coast, passing through Boston, they might stop into Brookline and buy a book at Booksmith and get a coffee and get a quick charge or something like that. So anyway, some of the infrastructure is already being built with monies from the VW settlement. So, we'll have a hearing on this one also and provide a report on where the schools are with our fleet.
David, I know that you had had a report a couple of months ago about this and some of the discussions you have for one of the liaison ships that you were at. And you mentioned someone's name who was very involved in it. And I was wondering if, maybe if you could dig through your notes about that person, might be good to put in contact with Matt Gillis?
It's Susan Martin, and I would be happy to get her in contact with him.
Excellent, even though there's somebody at 11 o'clock at night. All right, so the other one I had on my list is Articles, Article 26 on defining equity goals for the town, and which also mentions the schools. Do you want to tell us exactly how, Ms. DeCopp?
So, given that I'm a co-petitioner, I should probably recuse from this decision?
Just, no, how does the Warren article mention the schools? In the text?
I'm happy to answer.
That'd be great.
So, relative to the schools, this Warren article encourages the schools to communicate with the work that would be happening on a regular basis via this Warren article with the town. And I think that the, a key, what I think the, I would recommend to the school committee is whether you decide to take a position on the Warren article or not, to submit a statement to town meeting, or to direct me and the school department to prepare a statement for town meeting of the equity work that is happening, both what we have started relative to human resources, to professional development, to recruitment and retention, sort of, the things that we have presented on, sort of piece by piece over the past year and a half, and prepare that, as well as our goals, so that town meeting understands both what has been happening and what we hope to happen. And the school department relative to equity and the work of equity in our, in and across our schools. So I, my opinion is that type of statement is important to submit to town meeting, whether or not the committee decides to take a position on the Warren article.
I agree. I think it's, would be really great for the community to know what the schools are doing in regards to this. It's an important topic, and I think that some good work has begun and there are good plans in the future. And I think that more that we can let the community know what we're doing and what we're working on and how important it is to us, the better.
Just a question of clarification. Is Article 25 financing Article 26? No.
Yes, that is correct.
Why weren't they one article?
I am not sure. I'm, I...
Well, I'm asking the petitioner.
I would believe that it would have to do with the process for town meeting and what the moderator recommended to the petitioners. I don't know that, but that would be my assumption on how it came relative to two separate articles.
I have it under the heading of Moderator Gaskin. Okay, so were there any, so we have four Warren articles, which I believe we're, we'd like to have a hearing on, and there are others that...
Just review the numbers.
Yeah, I think it's five, 11, not five?
11, 20, 23 and 26. Come to anybody? Yes, Ms. Scott?
I, I'm just curious, because there's the Newbury College article here. Is it not? No, I think it's... Oh, that's a good question.
So, my understanding is if this special town meeting has the articles to allow the town to move forward, this town meeting, I assume they will do a special town meeting before the town meeting if everything works the way we would, might want, and there's a price and an offer and an acceptance, then town meeting would have to approve that. But I don't think that's in here because I think that's presupposing, I would imagine.
I think I looked at some of the maps and thought, oh, yeah, that might be Newbury.
No, no.
No, all of those maps are relative to the, it's, I'm going to get this wrong, it's the zoning overlay...
For Waldo Dergan.
Yeah, the overlay district for Waldo Dergan.
Well, there's also maps for the Brookline High School. I just...
Would we, would we want to have a, would we want to have a hearing on the Warren articles that are being considered at the special town meeting?
Well, let's take that up. I was gonna, I was actually going to mention that, or bring that up as soon as we had done with this. My sense is that, well, I was going to ask the question because I don't know the answer. We only have school committee meetings on April 4th and April 25th, but April 25th is in advance of, it's too late, did someone say?
Or it's too late for the special town?
I'm not talking about Newbury yet. I'm just talking about trying to close out our discussion of the annual town meeting warrant. So I think April 25th is still okay, and I think we want, we've asked for various kinds of information and invitations and all this, so I think that for the hearings on these Warren articles, we should not try to do them on the 4th.
So the, so May, the report, the combined report is due May 2nd. So, it's just a question for the committee of the April 4th and April 25th school committee meetings, what's the right, what's the right timing of the public hearings relative to being able to submit any statement you may wish to submit to, as a part of the combined report? You certainly can also have something at the tables for sign-in if the combined report, if you missed the combined report, so.
So the question is really, in order to, we either have to, we're tight on time because the April 4th is kind of soon to get all the, to ask staff to get stuff together, but if we, but otherwise, if we wait until the second, we wait until the 25th, then we don't, it's sort of, it's hard to have a hearing and then, I mean, it would be very late in the night if we're trying to have Mr. Perman drafting statement language on his phone on the same night as hearing, so.
I think that...
We can figure this out.
I think relative to Warren Article 20, we can get the information from the building departments. I think for Article 23, we can get more information, but certainly not everything, given the complexities of electrification. And I think in terms of the, I think for 26, if it were the, I could not have that, the school department could not have the document completed a week from tonight, but if it was the direction of the committee to prepare the document, it could be prepared by the 25th for review and feedback of the committee prior, so that it can be finalized prior to submission. So I think if that level of information for transportation and...
So it sounds like, I mean, what my thinking is developing is that we should just get our hearings done, because the hearings aren't necessarily on our documents, they're on the Warren articles. Allowing the public to speak, the public to speak to school committee on the Warren articles, which they have access to. So if we can get any information out to the public to supplement that in advance of their being invited, that would be helpful. I think we should try, but I don't think it's a deadline to get something. And then we can have brief discussion and, and on each of the, what we've heard, and perhaps school committee can then provide guidance to the chair and the staff on what kinds of potentially draft statements could be, might be prepared for dissemination out to school committee and then discussion in our next school committee meeting on the 25th.
So it sounds like the hearings, yes.
We should do our hearings.
Hearings on the 4th.
Yeah. So we can have a hearing also, now over to, oh, and as Ms. Charlefsky did point out to me, Warren Article 10 in the annual town meeting is Newbury. There, I thought I saw it there, too. There's a sort of a placeholder. I assume it's because the select board might want to take some action and they don't really know, and so they got it, they put it in there. So let's take up the, let's take up the two special town meetings that are scheduled for April 9th, and whether we want to, because we could have a hearing next week, next Thursday, but then we would need to act with any kind of a statement that we wished to make that night in order to have it typed up, sent out, emailed out to town meeting members, available at the kiosks as a supplemental information. as a supplemental information to town meeting, a piece of paper. It could be read to town meeting, whatever. I mean, we can get it in, if we wanted to say something, we could say something to town meeting at this date. And what's your thinking on that question? Yes, Ms. Cottrell?
I, I personally hope the town acquires Newberry. Not for the, not to replace the Baldwin School, of course, but because there is open space there. There's, there are the buildings there, that we have office space, et cetera, et cetera. And I would like, if I could have what I wanted, I would like the school committee to get very much behind it, because there are many uses that we have talked about before, where Newberry would just be a place where we could think about a beep facility, we could think about all sorts of educational uses. Talking, for example, the, the EL program needs room for registration. We could have a place there. I'm not saying it should be exclusively school department, but I think people need to know that we have very legitimate interests in the property, and some very specific ideas about what those uses might be in terms of the schools. So, I would like us to have a hearing to see what people say, but then I think we could make a compelling case for support.
I would, I would agree with that, and, you know, just, again, like Ms. Cottrell said, not necessarily presupposing what it should be, or what it should be used for, but there, there's, it's a tremendous opportunity that could be beneficial to the schools. So I think we should support it.
So, just FYI for everybody, I was at the Fisher Hill Association meeting on Sunday, and they voted almost unanimously that the town should acquire this property. There was one person opposed, and they actually didn't specify what it should be used for. They were concerned about the town having control of the site, and it being developed appropriately for, for town uses or for housing. And the other piece that Slakman-Washinsky talked about was the possibility of the academic building. This has sort of been talked publicly, so I'm, I feel somewhat comfortable speaking about it. The one on the west side of the prop, of Fisher Avenue, the one adjacent to the park, the modern building being used as a beep center, home for beep, and for the other rentals that we have. So, and, so that was one of the things that, that was discussed publicly at this meeting. Nobody had any objection to that. Least in the voice.
So, so why don't we have a hearing on, next week, on the various articles and the, for the various town meetings, special town meeting and special, second special town meeting, scheduled for the 9th? And, and either include in that or not include in that, Article 10 from annual town meeting? I'm not sure whether it matters, but there is, you know, well, we can sort that out. Okay. Yes. Yes, we already discussed that for each and every yes. Why wouldn't we include it?
Well, or, unless they come up after the-
We can just list it. It's the same topic. I mean, and I can ask Chair Waschinsky why it's there. I assume the reason is because they thought it might come up, but, yeah, sure, let's address it, right? Save time, not to do it twice. All right. Any, that's, we're good on that one? Next is presentation on planned FY 2020 grant submittals and applications.
Again, as a summary introduction of funding sources that support teaching and learning in our schools, we have annual grant submittals for both entitlement and competitive grants. Federal state grants, local grants, and one of the requirements is that school committees shall accept any, any and all gifts, grants, and donations. And we've added an extensive section in our budget document explaining each of those grants, as well as providing, and will begin to, will always provide sort of a five-year history on the expenditures of those grants. I just want to restate, and this is going to be a common theme for next year, is that the operating budget for FY 20 does not assume any ongoing or future subsidy for any federal, state, or local grant. Grants will have to reduce their expenditures, not to assume the operating will have funding available to cover the over expenditure due to reduction in grant awards. I'm making this very explicit this year in particular, because there has been always an expectation when the grant awards arrive in September and October, is that when they're short, somehow the operating budget will take care of the FTEs and the, and the deficits at that point. So we're trying to change things up a little bit, and do some pre-planning around that, and be able to do pre-planning around that. And so, in, one of the requests, then, work that we did was to have all of the grants projected out for the FY 20, and really show what we anticipate for the grant award, what we're hearing from the state in terms of funding increases or decreases, and showing to the school committee at this point, what is, what's the expectation. And certainly, school committee has expressed, and certainly the superintendent's responsibility is kind of managing that. But it's having these discussions now in the spring, so that when we have a grant reduction, there are no surprises in the fall, or there are no surprises this spring, that we're not going to fill a position that was funded by a grant, or we're not gonna, we need to find, we need to change how that grant application happens. So here for our federal grants, are all of our grants, we didn't total it for you, but, so we're expecting Title II A to decline $17,000, and we're expecting the IDEA grant to decline $152,000. So we're in the process internally of identifying how that grant needs to be rewritten. But there's no expectation, nor did we build into the operating budget, any supports to replace these funds. The state grants show the same, so early childhood will be looking for, will see an increase. However, the inclusive preschool learning environments, I P L E grant, which has been actually been cut by a third every year since, since my arrival. So, the, currently next year, we're anticipating $45,000, and there's a reduction of $32,000. And we are, Vicki Milstein will talk about sort of that as part of her budget presentation for beep, and all the different funding sources. So I believe what we are doing in this case is, in this particular case, is that the costs that are represented by that $32,000 reduction are being moved to the revolving fund. MECO, we always anticipate an increase. This is what we're hearing. So, this $72,000 will essentially come out to, from the offset we have for general instruction as part of that grant. So essentially, the operating budget will not receive those funds, and that's incorporated into the, into the FY 20 budget already. Enhanced school health services, we've been predicting statewide this grant eventually will be going away. We need to do a little bit of work on this with our nursing staff in terms of the impact, if that grant really, really is going to be zero. We also need to do more work, understanding where we've been at this place in the, in the past, where there's a triennial renewal of this grant. We're at that marker point. And since so many school districts rely on these health services grants to support their nursing staff and clinics, I don't, it's like 50/50 whether the legislature will fund this or not. So, this should probably pop up on our legislative committee and find out kind of what, what really is the status going to be. Some of our repeat local grants that we have is our Brooklyn Education Foundation, and the total of what they award for teacher submittals. Boston University Consortium funds $5,000 in teacher submittals. And Brooklyn Innovation Fund is funding salaries for staff in their program work. And then we have a large grant we received. So that's our local, local grants that we will have active, that we know about, that will be active in FY 20. As the finance subcommittee knows, we, as we get new grants that aren't known like this, those will come through the finance subcommittee for recommendation and approval and acceptance by the school committee. So the vote for this, that needs to be scheduled would be, and the change for school committees to vote and approve the grant application and subsequent award for federal and state entitlement grants. The reason why I'm asking for this vote, and it for it to be scheduled in the, at a future meeting, is this vote, what this vote does is it authorizes the district to actually apply for the grant, but it also accepts the award, so that we don't have to come back to you in October asking for an award. I can get accounts set up as soon as the award occurs, and have expenditures changed. I don't have to wait for school committee to accept that award. And we then would report out, do, here's the, here's the update for this particular grant in terms of how we balance the budget, is the budget balanced, and it becomes part of our quarterly financial reporting. So that would be the function of this, this vote, is to sort of combine the approval of a grant application as well as the award in one vote in the spring, rather than two votes or no vote, rather than a vote in the fall, when really, we've already started school and already had plans, and started executing those.
Thank you. Questions?
Could you just help me wrap my head around the enhanced school health services a little bit more? We're projecting a deficit, so how are we, what's our plan to manage that?
So, right now-
What might this look like?
So what, so right now, we are, we are in touch with the legislate, our various counterparts at the public health. This is a Department of Public Health grant, in touch with them in terms of, is this just a cycle, you know, sort of repeat cycle where you tell us all, don't expect any money, it could go away, and then it shows up at either same amount or lesser amount? Or is this really, really, the grant's going away, there's no, there's really no funding? So much of this is tied to the, to the state budget and the legislative budget. And so Tricia Laham is in communication with that. One of the things as we get to, so we're in March, so around the end of April, we get much more definitive information about kind of where things are going. Then if, in fact, there isn't going to be a grant, then there'll be a conversation with the superintendent, and Tricia Laham, Casey No Miller, hey, what's the impact? What are the resources? It does fund, I think there's one nurse and one floating, I think they're floating nurse on it. There's more description in the budget document around the details of that, but it's what it's actually funding. So right now, we're really focused on what intel can we get that is, because we don't necessarily want to, so here's the problem we have, is that we don't really want to let people go, or, or thinks the people in the spring, when in fact, a week later, or two weeks later, we're find out that it was really funded. So we can, so we, the timing of that is very delicate. And so, there's a pretty strong lobby of school nurses and districts around this, around this grant. So, more, more will be, more will come, and we will need to make some decisions in, in May if we don't hear that this grant is being funded at any portion. We'll need to make some decisions at that point.
But what we're voting now is to apply for the grant. So what, what is the vote around this?
So the vote to be scheduled is that you would be voting to apply, approve the grant application and subsequent award in the future, so that you are, yeah.
And in the past, we haven't voted to apply, but we have voted to accept.
You've, you have voted for the acceptance of the award. But I'm, part of, the grants are so integral to our operation, it just makes sense to have these discussions while we're talking about the rest of the operating budget. There are some grants, I know that the Title I grant needs to be revamped and changed in terms of how services and allocations are provided, and that impacts the budget, operating budget, because potentially, we have to do things a little different. So, wanting to make sure that, A, the school committee wants to have those grants submitted, as well as then accept the award and do that now, rather than later.
I'd just say it's also, this change in the process is a good opportunity to, for, for us to present to the school committee some of the risks associated with various grants, as they're known. In particular, Title I, we remain incredibly close to the threshold, which would reduce our grant by several hundred thousand dollars, the low-income threshold for the town. So, just, in, in some of this, as Ms. Dunn has described, it's important to keep that information at the forefront, not only for the school committee, but for the community, so that, you know, if, we're, we're about four tenths of a percent away from hitting the threshold of losing several hundred thousand dollars. And so, we wouldn't want that to be a surprise, you know, in two or three years if we hit that threshold.
We discussed this at finance subcommittee, not today, but the time before, and I think there were just a couple of thoughts that I would just want to add to this. I mean, one was just that, I think we talked about, for sure, making it clear that there's no expectation of continued funding if a grant is continued. I think we talked about that with donations also, which was what I was getting at with the composting thing a minute ago. So, I guess my first question is, should we try to, I don't know, combine these a little bit? I understand the grant process is different from the donation process, but to the extent that it's some sort of, I don't know, it's not a policy, but it's an expectation that that just be clear.
We can certainly add grants, and I didn't add local, don't, a local grant either.
Well, right, because donations are, yeah, I mean-
I didn't add, but I was thinking about the ones that were repeating, but certainly we can add that as part of the vote and expand that.
Because I, yeah, I think it's just about, like, unless, and maybe we want to add language about, like, unless there is a specific school committee vote to the contrary, or something. Or just some statement of, you know, making it clear what won't happen if it's discontinued, or, you know, what if we don't get the grant, you know, is this so important? I just think that there's a little bit more language that we need around that. And, you know, even things like, well, what if we get a partial award? If we've, if we've approved it for the full award, and we get a partial award, is it coming back to us to say, we're only doing this piece or not? I mean, I don't, I don't want to get overly technical, but I just think that there's a lot embedded, operationally embedded in terms of, you know, votes and grants versus donations, and what happens if it doesn't, if it's discontinued? I mean, maybe what we need to say is, when you come to ask for a school committee approval, you have to, you know, tell us, or show us what's going to happen if it, if it's discontinued, meaning, we need to make sure we're not hiring staff. You know what I mean? Or whatever we're doing, if it's a point two, that there's somewhere else that point two is going to go. Anyway, just some reabsorption.
Or the point two, we don't need the point two, because you're not providing the services, so you wouldn't hire the point two.
Right, but if it's a, if you're taking, let's pretend you're, I mean, because this has happened, if you're taking a point two from somebody who's a full-time employee, and you're getting it paid for by a grant, and then that other point two is being done by somebody else, if the grant goes away, you still have a full-time employee. Who needs to get a point two back? Right.
Or you reduce it, yeah, or you have the conversation-
That someone's going to go, but, but we can't wait till the end of the year to say, oh, you're not a full-time employee anymore, you're only point eight now. I mean, that's, we, we've gotten into that, in, in, and so I guess my point is, is that there just needs to be some exit plan, you know, in, in the beginning, for not only just how are we going to fund this, but also what happens if it's discontinued, or partially funded, or not funded? Is it, you know, is it important enough it gets reabsorbed? And I think we talked about getting a recommendation from the super, you know, from you, or the budget manager, the superintendent, about what happens.
It's been a huge step forward in getting the FY 20 grant, grant programs actually projected, and, and knowing what that looks like, has been a huge advancement in terms of knowing. So now, you know, the superintendent and myself, and the two deputy superintendents know where there are sort of pitfalls, and we can sort of manage, manage that ahead and be proactive in that. So I imagine this whole process- So I imagine this whole process will mature and become a little bit more sort of fluid and predictable as we get more comfortable with doing a budget, advanced budget on many of these grants.
I'm just saying, clarify the language before we vote it?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Do, do staff know if they are partially or fully funded by grants?
I doubt that they know.
With the exception of Title I. So with, because of some of the Title I requirements, but IDEA in particular, because of the size of the grants and its support of student services, no. But, but Title I, yes.
So one thing in the past that we've gotten is a sort of overlook of the last five, maybe it was even 10 years of grants that we've gotten. I'm sure this document exists somewhere and to add this on to there. So we can see sort of the ebbs and flows of what happens with grants, some that have left forever, like the kindergarten grant.
So we, so what you have is what we sort of, we're pulling together a lot of information all at once. We'll be adding those years in as we vote them.
Terrific. That's all I wanted to, I didn't mean that for now, obviously.
No, absolutely, no. It's very helpful.
When there is the presentate, when we vote this, it would be interesting document. It's not something we can do anything about, but it's certainly something to reflect about.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So since our last school committee meeting on March 14th, I announced the appointment of permanent principals at both Lawrence and Coolidge Corner School. Friday, March 15th, I announced Monica Crowley had been appointed the permanent principal of Lawrence School. I met with Lawrence staff on that Friday afternoon and then shared the attached letter with the entire Lawrence community. Ms. Crowley began working in Brookline in 2008, serving as the vice principal of the Lawrence School from 2008 to 2014. And she then served as the principal of upper devotion from 2014 to 2018. As you know, this year, she's been serving as interim principal at Lawrence. Ms. Crowley is an outstanding administrator with a track record of collaborative leadership and a proven commitment to the Lawrence School community. Yesterday, I met with staff at the Coolidge Corner School to share the announcement that I have appointed Mrs. Jennifer Buller as the next principal of CCS. The attached letter was sent to all CCS families and staff Wednesday afternoon. Mrs. Buller has been working in Brookline since 2006. She spent eight years teaching a range of grades at Heath School before becoming vice principal at Coolidge in 2014. This past year, Mrs. Buller has been serving as the interim co-principal of CCS. Mrs. Buller has a track record of successfully guiding the CCS community through several critical transitions, including the temporary relocation of the elementary grades to the former six, to the six-story former nursing home on Webster Street, the design and renovation process for that building and on Harvard Street, followed by the successful move back to the new building. Mrs. Buller has advocated for the CCS community at every juncture in this process, and her dedication to the school is unwavering. We're extraordinarily lucky to have such experienced educator, educational leaders at the helm of both Lawrence and Coolidge Corner Schools. And I will add that at a future school committee meeting, all three recent appointments, Mr. Lewis, Mrs. Buller, and Ms. Crowley will come to meet the school committee. What I do not have in this report, but will have shortly for the school committee, is an update for early childhood. As you know, I'm going to go off, off-record here. As you know, after over 40 years in early childhood education, Ms. Milstein has decided to retire at the end of the school year. And while I am thrilled for Vicki, she has described being so excited about being able to go to baseball games and, and her grandchildren activities. She also shares with me some frustration with the demands of the digital world, and she is thrilled to soon be escaping from the world of email. And so again, as crushed as we all are that Vicki is retiring, we're also thrilled that, as I said, after over 40 years in public education, she is embarking on a new journey, which she is really excited about. So we certainly will have opportunities to thank and recognize Ms. Milstein. And I'll be meeting with the staff at a already planned professional development that Vicki had scheduled for next Wednesday to talk about next steps and we'll update the school committee as I make decisions about those next steps. Last week, we hosted three very well-attended meetings for families of current seventh and eighth grade students. All in, over the course of the three meetings, approximately 300 people were in attendance to share information about the planned use of the old Lincoln School. As you know, OLS campus will be used for ninth graders from 2019 through 2021 during the, during the BHS construction process, project. These sessions were held at Pierce, Coolidge, and Baker, and they were very well-received by parents and guardians, parents, guardians, and students who attended. I want to thank the head of school, Anthony Meyer, assistant head of school, Hal Mason, and their team, including deans Lisa Gilbert Smith, Brian Poon, and Janay Utaro, associate deans Brendan Cobus and Alexia Thomas, and special education director Wendy Ryder for preparing such an informative presentation, reassuringly answering many of the questions posed by parents about the plan. I do want to add that a question that came up at one of the meetings is relative to the footbridge, the MBTA footbridge, and whether or not it is structurally sound. The DPW was, as a part of the CIP, was putting out an RFP to improve that footbridge, and they have accelerated that RFP and to include a reassessment of the, of the bridge. And money's been set aside for any repairs that might be necessary for the use by a larger number of students. So rest assured, DPW is on top of the, the condition of the bridge. And so that anything that needs to be done in terms of cracks in the cement or sort of the path leading up to it will be remedied before school opens in September. Want to update the school committee on some specific diversity recruitment efforts that have happened over the past several weeks. As a part of our focus on diversity hiring, several memberships, members of the leadership team have participated in job fairs in the greater Boston area. Leslie University, the Teachers Lounge, host of a series of monthly events for educators of color in greater Boston, and the Massachusetts Partners for Diversity in Education, and the Greater Boston School Human Resources Network have all invited us to participate in their job fairs. PSB staff, including Human Resources Director Lisa Richardson, deputy superintendent Nicole Gittens, and BHS dean of faculty Janay Utaro, attended these recruitments sessions and report that we had strong interest from many promising candidates. Ms. Richardson has the information, the resumes and contact information from nearly 40 candidates and has begun the process of screening these candidates and sharing their resumes with hiring managers in the district. We're all very optimistic that these continued efforts will be successful and result in more educators of color working in the public schools of Brookline. A list of schools that I have visited since our last, my last report, including Brookline High, Lincoln, Pierce, Driscoll, Baker, and Heath. I want to add that some particularly noteworthy performances that I was able to attend, there have been a lot this spring, but I was able to see a kindergarten performance at Heath School, a kindergarten play, which was just amazing about community and, and the, it was just, it's just amazing to see the entire kindergarten on stage together. And the middle school play at Baker, which was Aladdin, and both remarkable. Very special thank you to all the adults who support students in that, in their performances. And again, these are just two of many. I wasn't able, for example, to attend The Little Mermaid at Pierce, which was a third through fifth grade musical performance. So next year, I will get to Pierce. And lastly, I want to share that on Thursday evening, March 21st, I had the honor of joining the Brookline Commission for Women to celebrate Brookline's Woman of the Year, BHS teacher Li Hua Shorter. Mrs. Shorter has devoted over 20 years to the students of Brooklyn High School and works tirelessly to foster the Asian-American community at BHS. As one parent noted, Mrs. Shorter's influence extends well beyond the walls of her classroom. She is a trusted resource to the entire Brookline community. The BCW also announced the winners of their annual essay contest, A Woman Who Inspires Me. First, second, and third place essay winners from fifth through eighth grades were announced, and the students shared their moving essays with us. Congratulations to Ms. Shorter and all of the essay winners. And at that event, both Ms. Monopoly and Ms. Fetterspiel were able to join me at the event and I think would, would second. It's just an unbelievable event. The essays that our students write about women who inspire them are so deeply moving and powerful and bring the audience to tears multiple times over. And then certainly a celebration of someone as special and as influential and impactful in the district as Li Hua is really a special moment. So I wanted to share that with the committee and hope that we be able to be there together again next year. Thank you.
I just had a question about the timing of hiring. So, so we have these 40 resumes, people who have shown some interest. Are we competitive in our, in the process and in the timelines so that we may get first or second shot at some of these teachers before they're grabbed by somebody else?
We, we have a lot of jobs posted and we have a lot posting, a lot. So all of our known openings are posted or are posting imminently. And as we've received various, you know, retirement notifications, notifications of, you know, I'm, we're moving to Miami, we get those in the queue so that we can remain competitive. We're, we're still in a good window. We don't want to be, to your question, to your sort of unstated point, we do not want to be hiring in June. We will not be competitive. Now is the time.
I was just going to add that there's an article on Li Hua on the front page of the Brookline tab and her award for Brookline Woman of the Year, so.
Just one quick question. There was a set of FAQs that I know are getting presented, prepared after the BHS thing. Is that on track to, when will that go up?
It is on track. I actually don't know when it will go up and I have not checked in with Mr. Mason or Mr. Chan recently. So, and Mr. Lummis has just returned, so he likely doesn't have the answer. But I will get that too. But it is, it is being prepared. I will also add that there are follow-up questions relative to recent building meetings that are already happening. So the follow-up about graduation and impacts of the building project are already being worked on. Okay? So that the updated FAQ from last week's, there were a number of questions from last week.
Right. So Mr. Poon was taking hopiest notes on flip charts, and I think there were many overlaps, but it would needed to kind of get all, and I think the answers needed to kind of get vetted through a variety of people to make sure that everybody was agreed on the answer.
It started and we'll, we'll, I'll get you the timeline.
There was also a set of things last night from the building committee meeting, but most of those were about the, anyway, we could talk about those offline.
And those, those I got started last night. Mr. Meyer and I got started last night with various departments. I do have one more update, but I'm going to do it as a part of Capitol.
All right. Onto Subcommittee and Liaison Reports. Ms. Ditko, Finance, anything more?
I think we spent quite enough time on Finance, but just two other things, because food services is under Finance. We talked about the food services RFP process this evening. I know there were a lot of questions about that. And to sort of quickly, there were some, we talked about the timeline and there were a number of-
The RFP is due on the fourth of August. The RFP is due in May. To the, the staff, employees, the advisors, and hopefully a BHS senior. Then there's, we sit in a meeting to review the RFPs on the calendar, which is, you know, part of April. We talked about interviews and site visits for vendors. We know the community is quite keen to do tasting channels, so having those set up in Brookline and having somehow, and having enough lists to make sure that the public can, you know, attend if they want to or whatnot. Obviously, the presentations of the school committee will need, you know, a good contract, and this is a lot to do in a short amount of time. I think we're about, from the very first timeline we got, we're more or less on track, although we're kind of pushing the outside of that. And our timeline is to finish all of this by the end of April. It's a lot of activity. And so we were strongly encouraging that we had firm dates for each of those things because it's a lot to kind of pack in April and there's a week of school. So I think there was a certain charge of that. And then I think, so I'm not sure when we're going to get that timeline, but I think it's important to, in short order.
I think the second thing was we talked about revolving funds. So Ms. Dunn alluded to this earlier, that there is this, you know, multi-step process for these, especially if we're going to be voting fee increases or we're going to be asked to be voting fee increases. So we talked about food services, BEEP and athletics in particular. And again, there's a multi-step process there. We were a little bit, we wanted to make sure that all the steps were going to happen in a timely way. One was that materials had to get pulled together and presented to the school committee. There had to be a public hearing on fee increases with enough notice to be letting people know. And then we need to vote the fee increase. And again, we only have two meetings in April if we're trying to do that sort of quickly. So we didn't quite understand how the timing was going to work. But as one example, we talked about athletics. And I just wanted to sort of, the kinds of things we were looking for is, you know, especially since the athletic program has some challenges with its budget, making sure that we understood enough about the, the budget itself. So where are the, you know, again, we, as we, we've talked about this a number of times, we just haven't seen, how is the split between the operating budget and the revolving fund going? What does profitability look like? You know, what if we're going to not recommend an athletic fund increase? And yet we know it's pretty out of balance? You know, why is that? Where are we relative to peer districts? Like, there's a lot, we've talked about this a number of times, but there's just a lot of information that we would need to be able to vote this. So I feel like we've talked about that information a few times, and I just want to make sure we're actually on track to get it before we're asked to do a vote. Because I want to make sure we're not squeezed and crunched and stressed out at the end of this process and trying to vote things when we're not, you know, ready to do that. I think the same thing was true of BEEP. We had a really rich conversation two meetings ago on BEEP. But again, like where are we relative to our peers? If we're recommending a 2% increase, why is it a 2% increase? It's the whole same set of questions. So Ms. Coyne has captured them beautifully, I'm sure, in, to the last two Finance Committee notes. So at any rate, there was also a question about the adult ed. Ms. Dunn in our la, not today, but our last school committee, our last Finance meeting had recommended that we have a adult ed presentation between now and the end of April, which was between now, meaning the last Finance conversation, and the end of April, about the program history and mission, the structure and governance, why it's under the PSB, profitability, revenue, operating revolving fund, same set of issues. All this is in the minute. I'm not sure how critical path that is relative to some of the other things. It's important. I just don't know, given some of the other things that are a critical path, where that falls. So we'll, we'll follow your lead on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think relative to each of those three questions, the critical path is food service. All of that has to get scheduled first and then building in the presentations. You know, so, so some of those, but presentations may be May because April is really a critical month for food service.
Right.
Sort of hearing everything you're saying, we'll, we'll schedule that out.
Okay.
And again, the Dalton Community Ed is an important presentation, but that could wait.
Okay. So that's helpful, just to kind of come back to us and reset some expectations, I think would be good, just to show how it's going to fall out. And I don't know when people feel like fee, not people, I don't know when staff feels like we need to vote fee increases. I would just make sure we don't get too, because again, we're going to have to communicate those to families on the other side. So those are the things that I would, I would note from our Finance meeting. There might be others. Oh, we had a discussion about rental fees also, two times ago, which we didn't quite get to this time, which was things like, you know, what are the tiers and how are we thinking about, you know, what can be charged to the rental facility fee, revolving fund versus operating fund, same question. And, and sort of, we, we increased the hourly fees in FY '19. What are we doing in FY '20? What are we doing in years after that? Anyway, there's just sort of the same set of questions around those fees. Okay. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Herlowski, Capitol improvements?
So looking at my calendar, the last Capitol Subcommittee meeting had been canceled. So, looking at my calendar, the last Capitol subcommittee meeting had been canceled. We have another one scheduled now, and we didn't reschedule. It had been canceled because of snow, if I remember correctly. The next one is from four to six, just before the special town meeting. I'm trying to think, members of Capitol are on town meeting? Is that at six?
Starts at seven.
At seven. So, it should be okay. I think, I thought to keep it, but I'm willing to change. Okay. Great. We'll keep that date. There's a lot going on in the individual projects. I think we've heard, I don't know if people want updates on the individual projects or we want to wait till the next time to, to do that. I mean, Driscoll-Ballman High School. If there's something specific that you'd like to.
The, the models are arriving on Friday and so I think that's really exciting. We should find, we'll have them at the next school committee meeting for certain, but they'll also be around on the fifth floor. So, if you have the opportunity to check those out, I think that's the next kind of big miles, exciting milestone that we've had in, in the two projects. Tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Wow. And is there a reason we wouldn't want to put them in the main town hall downstairs or?
Ben's going to look into it. We're not sure, we're not sure yet how fragile they, how.
Right. Okay.
Fragile and they are, so we just don't know yet if they're the kind of thing that could be put there. We also talked about potentially putting them in those glass containers, but he's going to look into the size and see if.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Lummis. Is there anything?
We'll just add that the, the fly-throughs that Mr. Levy created are now on the district website. We needed just to get updated fly-throughs to put on there, so the updated ones are on the website.
I, I heard also that JLA was able to acquire child models to go into the computer program so that it, the school fly-throughs aren't full of adults. Now, there are actually children in the fly-through, in the schools.
They're also animated, so they're like sometimes run at you, they like move sometimes?
Oh, really? I can't wait to see.
Okay. Yes. No, please. Yes.
So, two things about the high school. One is that for some time, I think you know that we've been trying to find Metco and CPAC representatives for the high school building project. We have secured those. Just as a reminder, this is the first time we've had Metco representatives on the building committees this round, so I'm quite proud of that. And there are CPAC representatives now as well, not just informally, but, so we need to go through some sort of process to name them as liaisons, but I don't remember quite what that is. I think it's the select board. At any rate, the individuals have been identified and they're willing to serve, which is great, which is increasingly important as we think about the next phase. So, last night, there was roughly three hours of meetings for the high school project on construction logistics and the MBTA. So, I will not review any of it with you, except to say I have a couple of copies of the presentation. It's also online. It's incredibly detailed and it's incredibly daunting. So, if anybody wants to see it, you should take a look. We do need to do, Mr. Lummis, some, well, at least we promised, since you weren't here, we promised all sorts of things, to get information out to the community, to, to solicit input and questions from neighbors, to get, in particular, we had a rich discussion about making sure the staff, high school staff had an opportunity to weigh in and then get that feedback through the process by next time because at that point, and then feeding it into the automatic email system. So, I think there's just a lot of, a lot of discussion about how to keep the community up to date. The only other thing I would say is that there was a rich discussion about including commuters in the discussion of the T-stop, for sure. We've done a tremendous amount of outreach with neighbors and so this is a great time to, before the plans are too, plans are too firm to get input from the commuters. So, a few town meeting members and, you know, Scott Englander and some others and Representative Tommy Vitolo put together a charrette with livable streets. They had lots of ideas two nights ago. They brought those ideas yesterday and there was a meeting with the architect. So, those ideas and the architects answered a bunch of questions, but there was a lot there that, there were ideas that we're not going to be able to do, one of which I would just put out there is moving the building. There are other things that seem more cosmetic and would, but really improve quality of life. And then there were some in the middle, we weren't sure if the MBTA would go for it, but the architects are going to go back to the MBTA. So, the plans you see might move a little bit. The only one thing that I would say is that the amount of surface parking between the UA building and the Cypress building was another topic of discussion. I don't know if you remember, a very long time ago, I had this vision and dream of that whole thing being a plaza, all thirty-five of those spots being a beautiful plaza for people and, and students and commuters. Anyway, we were, that was when we were going to put the parking lot under the building, but that was prohibitively expensive, so we kind of went back to leaving the surface parking there. But now that we are in a position to potentially ask some of those questions, then there was a discussion mostly pushed by me. So, Ms. Charlowski is going to, can say her piece after this to see if we could maybe reduce the parking at least by some. And if we could get agreement from the transportation board that they would give us more neighborhood parking permits, but at least turn partially that parking lot into a plaza, again, ensuring we still had spots for our teachers. So, the architects are going to put up some drawings. There are some conversations that would have to happen to make sure that, you know, again, our teachers weren't overtly negatively impacted. But again, that's a prime space for people and so if we can turn it into anything other than surface parking, especially poorly used surface parking, some of us would be pretty excited about that. So, I'm just putting it out there, if you hear wind of any of, any of those things. There are a lot of emails going around, precinct, town meeting members, the Green Caucus. We probably had forty people here last night, a dozen town meeting members. So, it's, it's going to be a, a big topic in town, or at least it's a big topic on that project.
As much as I agree with Ms. Ditkoff, that would be a beautiful space if we had parking. I'm very concerned about the amount of teacher parking that we've reduced already in the project and how much more teacher parking would be reduced. And it's, it's a battle. I mean, it's, you know, there are competing interests here and I'm not sure where it'll land, but I think we have to think seriously that, you know, the distances the teachers are walking to get to school. Yes?
I guess I, I have, I can't quite envision the plaza. I guess I don't fully understand what.
So, you know where the parking is at the T?
Yeah.
There's T parking right by the T. Then to the right, there's the, what's called the UAB parking lot.
Right. So, that is.
Goes, that whole space is what Ms. Ditkoff is referring to.
The only thing I will just throw in and I don't have a fully evolved opinion about it, but I have seen a lot of plazas get created with good intention that never get used. So, I guess a planner or somebody else really thinking about, you know, is this a space that's going to really be utilized, especially when you have a park right across the street? That's it.
Yeah. No, and I think that's one of the question, a good question to ask about this. The, the whole streetscape will be changed there, but nonetheless, you know, will kids hang there or will they, you know, go to, naturally across, or could they even go naturally across the street to the park, which will be enhanced also? It, it's not something that we should debate at this point, but I think it's something to keep on our radar, especially when we know how valuable parking can be.
Well, so we won't debate it, but I just will put, for some, this is my T-stop.
Yes.
And yours too. And people hang, a lot of people hang there because it's the high school T-stop. And so, so really, you need a safe place for students to hang and wait for the, wait for the T. It's not as heavily used as Brookline Village, but it, I don't know what the usage is, but it's pretty high and so.
And then we do more TDMs, it'll be more, you know.
So, anyway, I just, it is whatever you can do to make it.
I also just want to remember, able to remember, we are building a building right there for students. And so, at any rate, however much it's used now, we are putting hundreds and hundreds of students right there. So, again, we don't want them spilling on and hanging out on the T-tracks, so creating spaces.
Teach kids not how to cross streets and not to hang out.
Anyway, this has been a big topic of discussion. Let me say it that way. And if you'd like to be part of it, you are more than, the water is warm, you are welcome to jump in.
But, Mr. Glover, there is one discussion that you would be interested in. There's a discussion of.
Why did you open your mouth?
He's not listening to me. There's the discussion of making an entrance to the T from the back through Brinkton Road. And that would be a huge, so that you could enter and go into town from the Brinkton Road side alongside the school, there would be a path.
So, so just to be clear, there absolutely has to be an egress there. The question is whether it is an egress only or whether it's an entrance and what are all the lighting and signage implications on the neighbors if it's an entrance versus an egress only? And if it's an egress only, what does it look like? What's the pathing? What the, there's a lot of, this is, it's a complicated topic.
It's a, but there was a strong push from the neighborhood to have that access.
So, the neighbors are split. Some of the neighbor, some of the neighbors are very excited to have that access because they believe it will connect them better to Cypress Field and leave them less isolated. There are a number of neighbors as well who are quite worried about lighting, signage of a full-fledged entryway because it's ten, what is it, ten candle, whatever it is? Foot candles, thank you. Ten-foot candle lighting versus one-foot candle lighting, which is very different.
Right.
The hours, the fact that people will then be hanging out there, they're much wider accessibilities. So, to have it be a full-fledged entrance, I think is attractive to some people, particularly commuters coming from the other side of Route Nine or from other places so that they don't have to go all the way around the building, which is onerous. However, I think there were also concerns from the neighbors. So, I think that's something.
So, to be determined.
The, the architects are, again, so the point was that the architects were working on a lot of different feedback and seeing what they could do. They heard a lot of concerns of what, what they could do to try to find a middle path.
Superintendent, you said you had some.
So, I, under Capitol, wanted to update the committee on something that I had forwarded to you, which was a determination from the state in the request for a local report following the claim that was filed with the state relative to our spaces in early December. So, if you just bear with me, I just want to go through both what the claims were, the two specific ones, and then what the state's finding, finding was and the corrective actions that they're asking for. So, first allegation included in that request, the RLR, the request for local report, read, "The district does not provide equitable instructional learning spaces for protected classes of student." The letter of complaint alleged non-compliance for 603 CMR 28.03B. And the complaint stated, and I'll just read if you just, again, apologies for reading, but I want to go through it specifically. "The school district shall provide facilities and classrooms for eligible students to maximize the inclusion of such students into the life of the school. Facilities and classrooms serving only students with disabilities shall be at least equal in all physical respects to the average standards of general education facilities and classrooms. Resource rooms and separate classrooms for students with disabilities shall be given the same priority as general education programs for access to and use of instructional and other space in public schools in order to minimize the separation or stigmatization of eligible students. All eligible students shall have access to school facilities, including but not limited to those areas necessary to implement the student's IEP. School district shall provide whatever equipment and make whatever physical adaptations are necessary to comply with this provision, including acoustical and lighting treatments to remove physical communication barriers for students who are deaf or hard of hearing." So, that was the first, summary of the first allegation. In the finding, the finding for that was DESI's review of the district's report and supporting information determine that there are significant issues concerning the location for the provision of services for students in protected classes such as students eligible for special education services and English language learners in the district schools. For example, at the Driscoll School, there are small group breakout spaces in the hallways and this space in the hallway is used for specialized instruction for students in kindergarten in this example, who, through second grade, who have individual education plans. While DESI understands that students are receiving instructional services, these students with disabilities are not receiving the same priority as general education programs for access to and use of instructional spaces. Providing special education services to special education students in a hallway does not minimize the separation or stigmatization of these students or ensure the confidentiality regarding the provision of special education services. DESI finds the district has not fully complied with CMR, with 603 CMR 28.03B in this matter. So, the corrective action for that requires that the district must immediately relocate students receiving services in hallways. The district must provide a list of the K8 schools in which students were receiving instruction in the hallways and how each school will rearrange and arrange for provision of services in a classroom or service provider location. The district must also provide a report on instructional spaces not in classrooms at Lawrence, Lincoln and Pierce and propose corrective actions. Specific to Pierce, DESI is requesting an accessibility plan for inaccessible locations such as the nurse's office for students with limited mobility. So, currently, that report is requested by DESI by the end of this month, not this month, by the end of April. So, Deputy Superintendent Ms. No Miller is working with director and principals right now to develop the plan that we can implement. It will have impacts on spaces. Things will have to move and there will both be short-term and long-term impacts. The second allegation, the, in the report, was, or in the complaint, was, the complaint alleged that a substantially separate special education program located at Runkel is in violation of 603 CMR 28.066, which states, quote, "When students, when eligible students age five and older receive special education services for some or all of the day outside of the general education environment, the school district shall make every effort to maintain the student's access to the general curriculum and participation in the life of the school. The school district shall devote resources to develop the school district's capacity for serving such eligible students in less restrictive alternatives." And the finding for number two was DESI determined that the students in the RISE program participate in inclusion opportunities throughout the day and do not remain in the RISE classroom for a significant portion of the day. Student and staff schedules show that school personnel support students during their periods of inclusion with a one-to-one ratio. The allocation of resources demonstrates that the district has developed capacity for serving students in RISE in a less restrictive environment. DESI determined that Brookline is in compliance in this manner. And so, they determined in one area that we are in compliance, but in the other, which I think is the reason for all of the work that is happening relative to the school building projects, all of the compromised spaces that are being used. It's not a surprise and so we do have to immediately begin to, to remedy those. And Ms. No Miller will be before the committee shortly to discuss the plans that are underway to do so. So, just wanted to be sure you had that full information tonight so that you're prepared for future meetings.
So, is, and is that on the docket for April ninth, Capitol Subcommittee?
It, it will be.
All right.
The curriculum subcommittee met on Tuesday, March 26th, with Mindy Palo to learn about the LOOK Act. That stands for Language Opportunities for Our Kids. This is yet another mostly unfunded state mandate that was signed into law on November 17th. Its purpose was to give the district, districts, the state districts, more flexibility in meeting the needs of English learners. For example, school systems can now choose to have two-way immersion programs, the traditional English as a second language program, and a few other configurations. I'm not going in to go into detail since we will probably be having a school committee presentation before the end of the year because one of the conditions for meeting DESI's approval is interaction with the school committee. What I will say is that while there is much to applaud about this program, the requirements are very strict and very work-intensive. For example, every district has to have not only a town-wide PAC parent advisory committee, but PAC in every school with translation provided for those who attend the meetings. In Brookline this year, we have fifty-two different languages scattered throughout the district. Think about the workload and the cost needed to prepare for those PAC meetings, notifying parents in numerous languages and providing translators in those languages for those attending the meetings. This is only the beginning of a mountain of requirements tied to this program. It is abundantly clear that this EL program, as it exists here today, needs more administrative and support staffing to manage the demands of this new unfunded mandate. It is clear to us on the committee that Mindy Palo is doing a phenomenal job, but frankly, what she is doing to make all of this work. what she is doing to make all of this work seems to me to be unsustainable. That's the end of my report because we are going to have a presentation at some point soon. But our next meeting is Wednesday, May 15th. The agenda is not fully decided yet. We have two more SIP meetings before the end of the year, one at Lincoln School on Tuesday, April 30th, from 4:00 to 5:00, and one at BEEP on Tuesday, June 4th, 8:45 to 9:45, at 24 Webster Place. And in addition to that, we are going to be visiting some kindergarten classrooms, and I don't have the date right here.
May 2nd.
May 2nd, starting at 8:00 in the morning and going till 11:00 or 12:00.
1:00.
1:00. Okay. All right. So, and you're all invited to go to these.
Sure.
So, thank you, Barbara. That's very complete, but I just also want to add that we've had a huge increase in our EL population. So, not only are the new state regulations much more demanding, our workload is much more demanding, and so, I'm sure she'll share all that, but we've essentially doubled the number of ELs we've had in the last, I don't know, 12 years or so. And with the new requirements, we have to do testing within 10 business days of a child registering or coming to us. And so, that's hundreds of children that we have to do in a very timely fashion. So, she'll share all that with us when she comes, but it's just to keep in mind the context of it.
And I think as we delve deeper into it, this may be something to talk about with our legislators very soon, to see if the... What is actually in the legislation, what the department has put down and make seem like legislation, and, you know, where can we... Where can we get some relief, both monetarily and from some of the requirements, such as the 10-day? It used to be 30 days you had. At least give 30 days during the summer when students aren't in school anyway, and that would be huge because most of our kids come in July and August. Yep. Well... I just told you what one of the issues is, and there was another one that was brought up today.
Is this Promise Act?
Say that one more time.
Promise Act, the hearing we had.
Oh, no, maybe you can.
I attended, although I got there kind of late in the afternoon. It went very long. There was a hearing, joint hearing of the Education Committee, the House and the Senate's committee members, at the State House for the Promise Act, which is looking at funding. And it went on, must have been nine hours, the hearing, and almost everybody spoke in favor of the Promise Act and the funding. And there were, you know, families and students and educators and business people. Everybody spoke, and so, I don't know where it's going, but certainly, it's worth following to see if we can get the foundation budget.
Yes, Mr. Glover.
Policy. At our last meeting, in addition to menstrual hygiene products, we also talked about the transgender policy, which we have a draft of, and we will probably be talking about that hopefully again at our next meeting on Tuesday, if I can get my revisions together. We may also be talking about, maybe, school trip policy? Definitely? Okay. And possibly student council? Maybe?
Student Council.
Okay.
Ms. Dodge prepared to talk about student council.
Okay. And we probably won't talk about menstrual hygiene products again, although it was tentatively on the agenda because we will... Sounds like we're going to be talking about it here, so we'll probably just push that. And what did I say the next meeting? It's on the 2nd, next Tuesday.
Okay. Additional liaisons and updates? Anybody? Sure?
Went to Transportation Board recently. There were presentations on Brookline High School project and the Driscoll School projects as relates to transportation with a focus on pedestrian and bike access. The high school project was just feedback and presentation, and then the Driscoll project, there was, without giving the specifics, general agreement with the plans that we had going forward and support for those with some detailed sort of... I don't know how you would describe it, Mr. Pollak. You were there as well, sort of addendum attached to some of the things that they wanted to see. Generally, well-approved.
The Transportation Board voted unanimously to...
Approve of the things that were recommended in the plan and...
Approve the traffic plan, yeah, for Driscoll with some... They noted that they were taking on faith the development of pedestrian pathways through the park because the park hasn't designed yet, and they understood that it was going to be designed in a process, and they urged that those pathways be... Follow the desire lines and logical and be good for kids on bikes and getting people to the door of the school and straightforwardings like that and...
Specifically, a sidewalk along the park side of the school on one side of the street leading in. I can't remember the name of the street, but...
Oh, well, there was some... Well, there was... There was discussion... There was a lot of discussion about the possibility of extending the uphill sidewalk on Westborne Terrace, which ends about where the gym is now and doesn't then carry along in front of all of those houses. And there seemed to be some difference of opinion about whether, given the trees that are growing by the... Between the garages that are cut into the aisle there, whether there would be enough room to extend that sidewalk so that there could be sidewalks on both sides of the street, and they asked that that be looked into, and they were assured that it would be, and there was a couple of extra feet that they were having... They were playing poker with about where the width would go between lanes of traffic and lanes of sidewalks and bikes and all these different things, and they basically said that if you could use those two feet to make a sidewalk on the far side, then go ahead and do it, and otherwise, give it back to the park. Anyway, there was a lot of... It was the Transportation Board, so as always, a lot of very, very specific detail, but they voted unanimously to advance the traffic plan.
The only other thing that I had for liaison report was just a heads-up of Brookline Asian American Family Network is having an essay contest awards event on May 8th, and I will bring further details as they become available. Hopefully, they will have them by the next meeting, April 4th, and also that we may be expecting during public comment, some students come to speak with... Speak to us and share their views during the public comment at the April 25th meeting, possibly.
As passed Monday, the 25th, there was a climate action meeting. The majority of time was spent on a presentation by several students led by high school junior and Julie Mitra regarding the Green New Deal and the high schools and her desire, as well as several students who worked with her, both at the high school, at Lawrence, at Driscoll, many of them were present, to see the... To see Brookline sign off on this and encourage our state legislature to encourage the federal government to pursue this. Many of these students spoke quite eloquently about climate change. They spoke about their personal observations as to what they are noticing when they visit certain places and about how climate change has a profound effect on all of us, not just as a society, but as individuals as well. The entire board unanimously voted to support the resolution that had been authored by these students, and everyone was very pleased to see how engaged they were. There was also a presentation by Select, which is a solar energy company, describing various proposals for how the town can pursue more solar energy and more fossil-fuel-free energy in our buildings.
So, update on the College Corner renaming. As Ms. Dickoff reminded us at the beginning of the meeting, there's two events, April 3rd and April 11th, for the public presentation of the semifinalists that students have selected and are moving forward to the committee. The students have been working almost every day this week, actually, I think, every day this week, finalizing their presentations, their slideshow, their sort of elevator pitch for the prospective name that they are advocating for, questions they may receive. And as a part of that process, we're finalizing with students sort of a one-page, I would say, quite beautiful, sort of to be both a handout and poster for each of the semifinalists. We hope that PDFs of those are available on Monday with the printed media ready for Wednesday, so you can look for that. And there is some desire to have additional community meeting, and given that what we're looking at prospective... Potentially is a possible town meeting vote at fall town meeting, I think that it's appropriate. It doesn't hurt the timeline to schedule a third public opportunity for the public to hear from students and be a part of a presentation. So, we are going to explore a possible third event after the April break. So, really exciting. Can't wait to share with everyone the hard work of students and turn things over to you and to the townspeople, so both the town at large and to all the elected boards to take up the process from here.
I just have a question.
My... I just had one other update that was totally unrelated, so...
Is there any possibility that you will video either of these presentations? I happen to be going out of the country, and I would love to see them, but I also think it's a very good way to, you know, put it out on the... Other people in the community can see it.
So, the format that we've designed so that folks who attend don't want to... Don't feel pressured to be there right at 6:00, so come at 6:00 or 6:15 or 6:30, is that the students will be set up throughout the multipurpose room with their poster, with the computer, with their slideshow, with... Ready for their presentations, folks can go around and learn. And so, a video of that event wouldn't capture the presentations. What we're aiming to do is video each of the students' presentation about their person so that those could be loaded either on the website or some other form. We haven't finally sort of figured out the best way to make that happen. So, the broader event, just the format of the event, to ensure that it is open no matter when someone shows up, sort of is contrary to sort of a quality video production of that event, so...
Be on the way.
But, yeah, yeah. And we're also... We'll be posting this on the website, and there'll be a digital feedback form, so there'll be paper feedback forms for people to submit comments, and then there'll be a digital form as well so that you don't have to attend the events and you can still read about, do your own research. I think all of the people are incredibly fascinating, so I know there'll be a lot of research happening, you know, on starting early next week when the list of semifinalists are released. Completely unrelated because as elected officials, you may get this question, start getting about the last day of school. We've only had one snow day, and we typically announce the last day of school on or around April 1st. So, as of right now, and will be announced on Monday, the last day of school will be Friday, June 21st. There is a caveat. If you've had five snow days before April 1st, if there is a snow day or weather emergency after April 1st, you don't have to make up that day, but if you have not had your five days, you do. So, if there is a weather emergency, that's just sort of the only caveat, if there's a weather emergency after April 1st, the day will have to be moved. So, we're tentatively... We will tentatively be planning our eighth-grade graduations for Thursday, the 20th. There is a school committee meeting that night, but we'll work on scheduling so that school committee members can attend the graduation ceremonies, and then we'll schedule the meeting accordingly.
Wouldn't it... Would it be possible to have it maybe on Tuesday instead of Thursday so that we're not...
The school committee meeting?
Yeah. No, either, the graduations.
It really would have to be the school committee meeting because by state law, we're not supposed to have the graduation for eighth grade until the last day.
Oh.
Not... That's not actually the state law, but there's no... There is no... High school seniors, last day is well before the 180th day. There's the expectation for all students, including eighth graders, that they are in attendance until the 180th day. And so, when you have that date earlier, it implies that then you don't need to attend school. Students have to be marked absent. Families are upset that you've had a graduation, have someone marked absent.
Okay, all right.
So, I would propose moving the school committee meeting. I'll work with the chair.
Yeah, work with the chair. Not necessary.
I have a very brief update. Last... I think it was last Thursday, the 21st, I had... I participated in a panel discussion. I was reached out to by the staff from the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, and they, in partnership with the Housing Authority, had piloted a three-week... Something like a three-week training on... Or sort of workshop, if you will, a three-week workshop on how to participate, to increase participation, or how individuals might move forward with participating in town boards, committees, and commissions. And then, so, several... They reached out to several people, Lloyd Gellino, myself, a member of the Transportation Board, to just come and talk about that with the participants from the workshop. So, that was a really enjoyable couple of hours at Trustman House, the Housing Authority Community Room in the basement, and talking with people about everything from town meeting to what, you know, how much time it takes, what the different kinds of opportunities are. I gave everybody a little workshop on notify me, how you can sign up to just get notified about all the... Anyway, it was... It was much appreciated by everybody who participated, and they're going to run it again. They will continue to... They thought it was... Everybody thought that it had been a good exercise, and obviously, it's timely. It's on the warrant for a town meeting fall... The same sort of thing is on the warrant for a fall town meeting. Well, so, the last thing on the agenda under updates is just a report on our workshop, but perhaps we were... We were... Although Ms. Dickoff wasn't able to attend because she was away, but we just approved the minutes. And so, what I would say is that for anyone who's curious, I encourage you to, as soon as they get posted, to read the review of it, which is quite detailed. The minutes are quite detailed. And is there any new business? So, we have... I believe we have need of an executive session, and so, I move that we meet in an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brookline Educators Union, Unit A, Unit B, and Paraprofessionals. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And purpose six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. This is in relation to Newbury College, 129 Fisher Avenue, Brookline, Massachusetts. Ms. Quine, would you pull the committee?
Yes.
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 And the committee will not reconvene in open session.